Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ken, roll call please.
Here, Steve Feldman.
Here.
Councilmembers Kevin Robinson.
Here.
Joni Barr.
Here.
Robert Bauer.
Here.
Sarah Beck.
Thank you. All right, do you have a motion tonight to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll make that one.
Councilor Robinson makes a motion by a second.
I'll second that.
Councilor Barr makes a second. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Will you not consent to agenda? Do I have a motion tonight to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes a motion by a second. Councilor Ullbeck makes a second. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Meeting of the public, Jenny?
Um, Tim Devine.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly. Uh, Tim Devine, and 21672 Tiger Street, Northeast, in East Bell, current tenant, suite B San Andres. Uh, thank you for allowing us to speak. Uh, so after eighteen years of living in East Bell, raising two kids, that one school graduated at Saint Francis, um, we bought thirty-two acres in Saint Francis to build our forever retirement home. We were surprised when we actually, uh, found out that a permit, uh, was not granted due to the size of our attached garage. So, per the city ordinance, uh... Per city ordinance 1018-6, the attached accessory structure shall not exceed eight hundred forty feet square feet in size, except that the maximum square footage can increase to one thousand square feet provided the accessory structure size does not exceed eighty percent of the foundation equipment of the principal structure. And this limitation, if you want to see right on the front, there is requirements of the law. So, our builder last week, uh, and I met with the city staff, including Kate, Phil, and Jody. Uh, we discussed various options to sharing our garage from the land sixteen hundred square feet, uh, and going through, or going through the variance process. We also discussed the ordinance in particular that I just referred to and you have, and is intent, uh, that appears more of residential lots versus rural lots. So, instead of going through the variance process, we thought, uh, I thought I'd come tonight and discuss the possibility of working with the city staff and amending the ordinance to take into consideration of lot size and the foundation equipment of the principal structure. This change would, uh, would benefit us, of course, but it would also benefit future residents on larger lots. Potentially reducing the number of future variance requests that you could wind up with. I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Some others say it's not the same for your city, it's little, it's different. It just seems like the garage size is made for more of a city lot. Like, all of them, Landlakes, Forestlake, Hamley. But Hamley, for example, they get a one acre lot, you have a certain sized garage, or you get a bigger garage. Like, Landlakes is, you go out to your garage, and I can see eighty percent of your foundation size. We have a foundation size of twenty-six hundred square feet, or it's more than that. That's what we have right now. We can lay out a house square foot garage in it. This here is a city lot, it's a big lot. This city, if you, if you could amend it to say that if you're on acreage lots, you can have a bigger garage on your house, considering that the house is, is a decent size also.
So, the house size is, the foundation is twenty-six hundred square feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's just the house size.
All right, and this, this is the first time council's heard about this, so I have no knowledge of this right now. So, um, you're like, you're quite, you'd like to build a garage, how big?
Well, we're running around, I can say it was eight hundred square feet, roughly what we are. That's on the house square. You got, example, also, we didn't think they'd give you a question while doing that, we didn't know that you had these ordinance on it. It's like in Columbus, you can have whatever size garage you want, and only want to have, uh, be strictly on a bigger garage. When you got a nice, uh, small, the garage should be bigger, plus it's on acreage.
This would be a, a tax garage?
Yes.
Thank you. We're definitely gonna be, just by looking at this, I mean, the front of your house is gonna be a little garage, but wow. That's, you know, and you are an acreage owner, can, can you tell us the latest and something about this?
Mayor, council, so we, we did meet as a group because the garage is currently about seven hundred square feet over what our code allowed. It is something we've had other home builders, you know, question, however, with our current city code, that's where we have them, no place.
A thirty-three acre lot. And I'm sure we have other houses on big lots that go by the code, right?
Wait, Mayor, council, and they're correct. This, this statute is the same for urban properties as it is for our rural. There is no consideration for the rural properties, even though the lot sizes are bigger. Um, we cap it at a thousand. You know, it, it's not taken into account, you know, the larger homes that are coming in. I know they were to fill some in regards to the way to design it as a storage, um, but that can also become costly due to the, the installation and the footing requirements to try to break that up.
So, if it was, let me just ask a question. If it was detached, how big can it go?
Five thousand square feet.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. Um, but because it's attached?
We're counting on it as well, and our current code is correct.
How deep is this garage?
Uh, in some spots, it's eighty-four. I'm very surprised because we currently live in, we've got our house, and he's got all the garage there, it's about fifteen hundred square.
So, if detached, they can go five thousand, but attached, they can't go basically a thousand?
Correct.
And, and a variance is not easy to get, right, or get approved, I want to understand.
Mayor, council, variances aren't easy. They're, they're set by guidelines, and one of those guidelines that'll trip up something like this is that has to be a circumstance beyond our control. While buying the property and creating the plans, they're not going in with the circumstance that's beyond our control or limiting this property due to its size, shape, or some of those. So, a variance is definitely an option, but it's, it's something that becomes a very gray area because they're not necessarily qualifying for those requirements.
Right, and, and, uh, you know, my concern, as I'm sure council's concern will be in statutes, like you said earlier, opening up a Pandora's box. Because should you get approved, I'm, I'm sure someone else will be in front of us doing the same thing. If we, if we skirt around the variance, um, you know, the variance is in play where, you know, you're putting up a fifteen hundred dollar amount of money, uh, but you've got to prove a reason for it, which kind of restricts us, you know, kind of restrains us, you know, having multiple people come in and go, oh, we want two, you know, ten thousand square foot garage, you know? I mean, and I, I understand your point as far as being on thirty-three acres, I, I do understand that.
What, what I was suggesting, right, if we, if we work with staff and revise the ordinance, is really to, you know, keep the eighty percent of the foundation square footage, but remove the thousand square foot, you know, maximum.
I think that's almost worse than the... I think the problem running there is depending on the foundation, that's on, on the lot. Because you guys have a huge area, I get that. But I think if you just take something out of it, that opens up Pandora's box even more to where if we looked at it, if we were to look into it, we'd look into more specifics as far as acreage and size and stuff, to where it would be open up based on lot size type of thing, rather than removing that from the current ordinance. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and this is only in the, in the rural service area affecting of the urban, this, this guy.
Right.
So, that, the city lots, you still, you still have to meet those same requirements that are in the, the urban section.
Right, but we go by eighty percent of twenty-six hundred, that's two thousand eighty square foot, which is more than, what do you want, true?
I don't need garage, I think.
Everybody needs a bigger garage. Anyway, um, the thing about that is, though, um, it's hard for the council, in my opinion, and I'll just leave it open for discussion here, but I mean, hard for us to do this at this particular point without having full knowledge. And really, when we did change some shed sizes recently, uh, we went to a work session discussion, uh, to look by the public and the whole process that we did. But I'm sure that's gonna hold you up for your construction, uh, which you probably have slated already, or soon to be.
Correct.
Which, which is the date you have your construction starting?
How would we like to start tomorrow?
So do you think? Something more like this. Uh, okay, um, um, like I say again, this is an decision we can really make at this particular point, because like I say again, it, uh, we want to be right for the public at large in the future, uh, and we don't want to set ourselves up for any, uh, problems down the road. Kate, what, what would you advise us?
Mayor, council, seeing that this is an open forum, they're bringing a suggestion forward. You would either give staff the direction to look into this further, or, um, if it's not something you wish to pursue, you would give us that direction as well. If we were to look into it further, we'd have to find some local examples, other communities, I think consideration for the lot size. If I believe this is in an agricultural zoning district, correct? Yeah, so, I mean, we've even got some differences between our residential and agricultural districts, but it really comes from the direction this council wants to pursue this.
Well, you know, this is a problem we've run into before with rural versus urban. Uh, and the city has changed through years, fast years, to more urban. Uh, and that was one of the reasons we changed sheds, uh, sizes based on, not on the utility, uh, uh, supply, but the size of the shed, half acre, and rural and urban should be the same sized shed. And we, we changed that. But there was a process that we went through to do that. You know, I, I know we were warned by a former planner, and he's very cautious about ordinance changes and, and policy changes because it can open up like the Pandora's box, a can of worms, so to speak. So, uh, let me just get some idea of what the council thinks of this. Kevin, where, where's your thoughts on this?
Well, I guess, you know, during the campaign and even during this year, you know, Kate and I spoke a lot before whether there's any truth to the rumor that some builders do and some builders don't want to be here because we seem too constrictive. We are in a unique situation, but yet it's our responsibility to find resolve in some of the areas where we are at, ag and rural. Uh, I guess I'd be curious about the setback, the home from the road, and how it compares to other homes in the area, and if it even impacted the area. I mean, we get back to the, the question of like McMansions per se compared to something much smaller, and, uh, that's why some of these ordinances come into play. You want to have some equity, not to make things equal in the world, but to make the, the fluid, fluidity, really. You want the houses to look nice amongst, you know, amongst other homes. Where this one might stand out in an obscure place, but in the ag, setting at thirty-three acres, maybe not so much. And if the driveway is two hundred feet long, maybe not so much. So, I think it's, uh, the city's responsibility to, um, try and navigate this again. We are in a, we're a different type of situation, that's not Edinett and, uh, something like that. So, I think we should be a little more, uh, open minded. I know we have a timeline, but that is not our problem. And we do want to welcome citizens to come to, um, Saint Francis, as well as builders, to say they had a good experience here. But I think it's worth, worthy of some discussion.
But I also want to clarify here, a thousand square foot garage is a big garage.
Right.
You know, I mean, that is, most garages are not near that size, thousand square feet, just for now, just for general.
Right, but a lot of the size can be that size, and it definitely reflect, I mean, when we have homes in common that are two four door, or two stall garages in the front.
I understand that the original of a thousand square feet really isn't bad. People today are use garages for boats, for recreational vehicles, and I'm sure you will too, you know, with high garage doors and depths that you have, uh, and then storage and stuff. I think you never have enough storage in a house, including on a builder, I know that for a fact. So, I understand you. Uh, but at the same time, um, you know, we have to be cautious in how we do this. And, um, the problem is, again, that you, you want to get started, uh, our process will be longer than a day, I can tell you that. Unfortunately, I'm not a professional politician, but I can tell you government doesn't move all that quick.
Understand, yeah. Um, my understanding is we have, we revised our plans, and we can talk about this one night, and have a, uh, a separation in the garage, negatively, and so we have for, uh...
That's what I was gonna, I was gonna mention that to you. I mean, if you could separate that, you'd be in, you'd be in a great area, but you, but you could get what you want. Almost you'd go and get what you wanted and taking it to.
Kind of, yeah, I mean...
Wouldn't be ideal to you.
There's additional costs, and, and clearly there's a separation between the two. There's significant additional costs because you have, or essentially a forty-four foot, uh, frost footing. And then build the wall with the door, insulate the whole thing, move the whole, um, envelope of the house essentially, because that becomes almost livable space. You have to have a way in which you heat it, baseboard heat, that type of thing. We've drawn the plans that way. However, working with the city and Phil, you know, if we ever change, convince you that the ordinance could be changed, we could go back to our earlier plans. We don't have to pour those footings right away, we can do that down the road. Probably sixty days down the road, from the commencement of our deal. So, that could be actually two months.
So, what you're saying is you could, I was thinking more like, you know, just basically separating, you know, of course you can't do that the way your design is. But you're talking about where you could kind of separate it from not separate it? I was thinking more like a passage weight to it, but...
Yeah, essentially between the two doors, the two overhand pet doors, we put a wall, a wall back. And that wall didn't have a, a door in it. And then on the, if you're facing the house on the left hand side...
So, it's basically, uh, unattached, attached?
Right. Yes, it's storage.
I like that one.
No builders here.
Well, that's, that's a trick and a half there.
Mayor, council, when we met, we did talk about the timelines, but with the two readings and thirty days. So, they're, they're aware, they're aware of those constraints with time if we were to do any type of ordinance change.
Okay, but then, the way your house is, you know, I mean, and I'm looking as a builder and, I mean, um, you really want to do this, you have to excavate basically all of it and get it ready because you've got trusses that are coming and playing to the garage. I mean, it's, you just can't hold up one area and do around. You could, I suppose, but why would you want?
We can, because the, the truss is already spanning over the whole thing. I'd be able to do this if we didn't know it from a day before getting to urban. We're just asking, that can work out. Just go ahead and pull through the whole thing if, if ordinance change. We're just asking, some other cities, like I explained at the beginning, is they have lot sizes and how big a garage you can have on it, how big it can be. I understand the thousand square foot again, and you've got city sort of lottery area, yes, I understand that totally. And Landlakes had done some, until we had a bigger garage, and it could be what's at eight hundred back then, but it'd be prolonged to be it. You're okay to make it bigger. You know, here we can do the same, it's similar, but it's storage, right? We have to change it, heat it, we have baseboard heat in it. It's unnecessary, so I think it was an idea, but that's what makes it work for far as the way you have the ordinance or the code laws. But we're just saying that we're on thirty-three, but thirty-three acre lot, or even if we're on a five acre lot, we should be able to build a bigger garage out of ordinance, which is changed, it to accommodate that if you're on a bigger lot, yes, you can have a garage of this size.
Oh, I understand that, and I understand to you, uh, in the meantime, as this council wants to go to a discussion on this, at a work session and change it, and again, it's gonna come to a thirty day and then a sixty day by the time it ends up, that is gonna hold you way up, and you're not gonna want to do that, I'm sure. And then in the meantime, how do you really start framing this or doing this based on, let's just say, for instance, sixty days you get what you want, in sixty days, you want to start building tomorrow. You're not gonna be able to build this that way without, you know, I mean, work around that? Your house is too tight and the garage is too tall?
I understand that takes time, if you did a department change, coach, or everything on that, we discussed that earlier, we worked around it. We want to get started, so we get them in, we have a home, or something, whatever.
And that won't add extra cost for them that way too, by you working around?
It's gonna add an extra cost, and then, right now, for her, if you go on, like in the foundation, her, yes.
And so, what you're saying between, between the stalls, by, you're, you're talking about another block wall in the middle?
Yep.
So that it basically becomes a dead, an outside structure to a structure?
Right.
Wood framing won't suffice that, then I take it?
Mayor, council, those would be building questions I would refer back to Phil.
Well, because what I'm wondering is this, I mean, you know, I'm just asking questions, you know?
Yeah.
You know, dumbest one's the one you don't ask, but what I'm saying to you, what if you, what if you framed the middle? I don't know, and you only have to ask Phil about this, might be, I weigh round, I'm not sure, but what if you framed the middle between the two doubles, okay? Frame it, so you don't have to pour a footing because there's no load bear on it, you know what I mean? And you frame it, and, and that becomes a wall, um, I wonder if that would suffice?
Well, we inspect your wall across with, with, already.
Do you want us to frost footings for that middle, if you put that?
I've done it a lot of times, about hardly anything with a frost, and if we didn't do a wall that is standable for the floor, then don't, you can't on the top.
Right, but I'm talking about a wall that's not bearing, I'm talking about a wall that's just a divide wall. That's what I'm...
It's not a bearing wall either.
Right, and what you're doing wouldn't be a bearing wall either?
No, it's not a bearing wall.
No, it's not structurally bearing because your trusses are over that.
Yeah.
Past that, so the structural bearing has already been set in place. So, you're just putting up a wall to get around this issue, and I'm wondering why it has to be block wall versus just a frame wall? And I would, I would even say frame it by two by eight, seven and a half inches wide, and sheet rock and insulating, whatever. And I'm sure you have to heat your garage anyway, wouldn't you?
We can heat the garage anyway, but it's very long across, so we can go with all.
And I'm wondering where Phil knows about that.
So, we're in council, so we've had other properties that have had this challenge. Um, we've required that, that same information based on building code. So, it's, Phil has been working with them, uh, pretty closely, Joe's been working with them. So, as far as the building and what's allowed to qualify as a garage, what makes it not a garage, so we can move forward on this code, um, that's, we've been working for a lot of behind the scenes.
I, I think the, the thought of doing what you described, which is the minor slot too, but then, uh, to do that, essentially skirting the, uh, the ordinance.
Well, I understand that, that's why you bring it up, because what you're doing, what you're basically doing by adding a block wall on the inside with footing and all that, you're actually getting the envelope of your building out, theoretically.
That's right, yeah, that is correct. And that's really the additional cost, you know, having to have heat.
Right, but it's not necessary in actual structure of the building.
I know, I agree.
It's actually a total waste of money.
Okay.
To be honest with you, it is, I'm sorry, uh, but it is, I, I build these things, I know, okay? All right, listen, Joe, you got anything for this?
To, to address, to address, uh, the question, we're about five hundred feet back from the road as far as our setback from the roads, so that's what the house is.
Well, that doesn't mean something we're gonna resolve tonight, anyway.
No.
But I think that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm over discussing anything. I don't know, what, what would be a realistic timeframe if we were to give you direction, I guess? No idea.
I don't know, Adam.
Do you give her directions as, finding, oh, the city code, and then she can make the planning commission, and then it becomes you guys, and so I don't know, are we too late for an August planning commission?
I was kind of curious, because I know we're, we're gonna schedule tonight, but it does probably too soon to even discuss this.
It kind of depends on, does the council want to touch it before it closes the planning commission? I mean, do we as a group want to talk about it and then send it off to the planning commission? Or do you just want her to come up with something and migrate to the planning commission, then you guys?
I mean, well, I have until tomorrow to get a notice into the planning commission this month. So, direction you give tonight would put a notice in the paper for the planning in two weeks.
Joe, you got anything else?
No.
Rob?
Yes, I, I would be in favor of changing that because the, the wording here kind of contradicts itself. I would see it in an easy change right away. If you have more than twenty acres, then you can have a, a structure garage that doesn't exceed eighty percent of your foundation. I'm all for building fifty million dollar homes here in Saint Francis. We have to get away from the rural and the urban, this contradicts itself. I'm willing to make that change, and, and we can start in the thirty acres or more, because there ain't that many in Saint Francis, and we're gonna open up some Pandora's box and scare everyone. So, that would be my suggestion is to, to put that threshold at thirty acres or more, you know, more than eighty percent of the foundation footprint of the home. So, if you want to make your home even bigger, go for it. That's, that's where I stand on that. Let's build more homes, let's bring in some tax dollars. Thanks for coming to take the round.
We're not doing anything, but...
Oh, oh. I hate for you to scratch your own plans and move on.
I doubt you're gonna do that.
And sell thirty-three acres.
I doubt it's possible.
Possible.
Sarah?
I, I think that we need to look at this a little bit further, and we can't come up with a decision right now, unfortunately. I wish we could, but I'm not opposed to looking at it and significantly changing it.
I would rather than get the direction out of your planning, and then if we discuss any of the work session, whatever we have on that time, I don't know if we're gonna have it at that time.
Well, I, I, you know, like I say, I, you know, I'm, I'm all for this, you know, the whole, I know this whole thing because, I mean, acreage and this, and we're not, and we have thirty percent acres, I mean, that's, that's a lot of land, so, I don't think we're... You affected a lot of people around here, I set that myself, but, again, we have to be cautious. So, um, uh, but you're telling me as a contractor, you can start this construction, um, and then wait for this decision to be done?
We, we know it's gonna take you time to do it, but we gotta get going.
Right, I know you gotta get going. So, you could focus on the house part, basically?
Yes.
Um, uh, but my question to you is, when you excavate for the garage, what are you going to do at that point? Just leave it, or hand dig it at that point?
At any extent, that's what I'm...
Well, if you're twenty-five years old, you might want to, or try it.
We got, we got a man right now who's inspector, he wanted it in there, I do him the man for...
Oh, for that frost footing?
They do it, it'd be nice, we don't have to do it. I agree with you on what we said earlier, probably, and I have never done it that way. I don't...
Well, I'm gonna talk to him about that this week, I will talk to him maybe tomorrow, but, so...
Right, and that's okay, that's...
Unless you would, unless you would call us.
Yeah, do we make them all, that's what it wants.
Because the 2018 code is coming out next year, of course, it's not this year. Uh, but there's gonna be some major differences in that for more, lessening, lessening of gray areas, supposedly. We'll see all that happen, but I'll, I'll check with them on that. But I, I think what we could do is direct, um, Kate, to, uh, bring us to a work session as early as possible. I mean, and I think we should look at that on the acreage part. I mean, I, I don't, um, I think if we leave it at ten acres and larger, that's where we open up the town of ordinance. But if we define it more to the thirty, you know, on up, uh, we lessen the amount of people that would be involved with that many thirty acre developments in our city, or property situations for that now, coming up for new construction. Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, but I'm saying so if we, if we take that ten and then set another, another amount, what, thirty up, I think we'd be all right, we leave the ten in place, but we add something on top of that. So, I want, thank you for bringing to our attention. This is one of the kind of things we get raised, uh, uh, between the rural to the urban. Things change with that, no, when we grow, uh, there are problems, and we have to try to solve them as we give them, so, um, but we'll work with you on this as best we can.
Honorable, Mayor, just to clarify timeframe, do you want Kate to send something to the planning commission for August? Because if we kicked that, the planning commission in September, now you're looking at thirty-six days after that, so ninety days.
I think, to make it quicker, we'll go right to planning zoning, you know, and, uh, but if we could, if we could discuss some of this at this work session coming up, just to maybe, you know, I mean, just some things we could discuss, or gets your, if we can, it will help the process. Meantime, you still be under construction, so it really comes down to your planning for that extra footing, uh, and block wall, but you don't know if you have to do it just right now. In the meantime, I'm gonna check with him on the code, because I want to know for sure myself.
We, Kate, I mean, I'd be fine with me...
I will do that.
I just, there was another way to put the phone, or not sure, and you can have it.
I, I just don't really see why you need to do that.
No, I don't.
But in other, other codes, I don't see a lot of rising, a lot of, so...
I didn't know, Dave, following your rules.
Believe me, twenty-five years later, I still have a lot of questions, I have answers. So, thank you for bringing to our attention, though, we will look into this.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. And thank you for coming, sir.
We're excited, and...
Anybody else want to open a meeting?
No.
Well, that's it, all right, good. All right, so now we're gonna move on to a special business. You can get over here to this. Okay, the Nogah County Road River Regional Trail Master Plan 2019 Amendment Request One, Resolution 2019-31, Resolution of Support. Okay, the Noka County River Regional Trail Master Plan, two thousand nineteen amendment request, one, resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirty-one, resolution of support.
I'm Mary, I'm Karen Alaska, I'm from Noka County here to present that.
Hello, thank you for having me, again, my name is Karen Alaska, I'm a park planner for the Noka County Parks Department. Um, I'm here to talk to you about, um, our River Regional Trail Master Plan. We're making a couple changes, proposing a couple changes to that. Um, so we wanted to bring it to you, um, to the city to get your input on it, um, and hopefully the resolution will support at the end of this. Um, so just to give you some background, um, all these images that I'll show you should be in your packet with the master plan report. Um, but so this is Noka County, um, our park system, we have seven regional parks, one park reserve, four county parks, um, two conservation areas, one natural area, um, and ten regional trails, of which the River Regional Trail is one of them. So that trail starts at the confluence of, uh, the River and the Mississippi Confluence, uh, and travels north about twenty miles to Iscany County. So it connects to Noka and over Oak Grove and St. Francis. So the two changes for the trail that we're proposing are strictly in the St. Francis area, um, so on that north side there. And so, just to get into the nitty gritty, uh, we're looking at two changes. So one, um, proposing an underpass, under Bridge Street, uh, to connect north and south. Uh, the second, um, the current existing alignment, which the, the trail is not there, but is planned to be followed, um, River Boulevard and connects up to Iscany County, um, we actually were approached by Paul and Kate, I think it was last winter, I think, last time, I think, um, about potentially moving closer to the river. Um, since there could be pressure in the near future to develop some of that land, we have the trail planned for, before the development occurs. So we looked at that, um, and came up with this blue line as a potential route, um, for the trail alignment there. So it gets closer to the river, um, proposing a couple rest stops, some boulder benches or something, um, along there. Um, it would be paved, half the two rest areas, um, it's about four, it's gonna be about four miles. Um, and when we were doing some community engagement for this, we heard from some of the homeowners in, um, the neighborhood on two hundred forty-four that either they wanted it really a lot or they didn't want it. So when we were talking with Iscany County, um, we came up with two connection, um, potential connection routes with Iscany County. So one, um, would be closer to the river, um, and follow up into Iscany County. If Iscany County can't for some reason make that connection when our trail is there, we would then have to come through this neighborhood, um, and then connect up along the county road there. So it's kind of a.
Karen, at that point, are you talking easements at that point you have to get?
Um, well, through the neighborhood, we're actually proposing just an on-street trail. Um, since there, um, there's not that many lots, so we don't think vehicles and bikes, you know, there would be too many issues with that. Um, so we're proposing through there just on-street, just mark it with some signs and some asphalt markings, if that. So, um, for that section, we're hoping, um, to be able to work with the developers when they come in to develop, to help plan and install the trail as we go, kind of saves everybody a little money, um, and provides them, uh, benefit to the homes right away. Um, and then moving to the bridge streets, underpass. All right, so we worked with our highway department to kind of figure out how we can do this, um, still make, um, ADA slopes for this. Um, and to do that, we would, it would require, um, a retaining wall of some sort along the river here, um, and along the trail. So connecting north and south, the existing, um, River Trail here, um, will come down the slope along the river, under the bridge, and then connect up to the existing trails in the park. Um, and then along with doing that, we're also proposing to make these connections, um, here and here. Currently, with the Bridge Street project that just finished, there was a trail that ended right here at the gas station. So we're talking about connecting that piece to the bridge, so at least there's a full trail all the way on that south side. Um, but obviously, we're moving that, goes that great for that, and then connecting also up on this side here. So there's some photos, we played with images to try and give you an idea of what it could look like. Um, so this is looking north on the south side, um, so the underpass would come down and under the bridge here. This trail would go up and meet Bridge Streets, but then you would either go right or left. Um, and then from the south, from the north looking south, so you'd be in the park, um, north of Bridge Streets, looking south underneath, uh, the bridge there. So those are the, the two projects we're proposing. Um, we think, and doing our estimates for total construction costs, um, if we just build it straight out, we're probably looking at about three point seven million dollars for the four miles of trail of the underpass. Um, if we need to acquire easements, we're thinking that could be up to two million dollars. Um, so that's what we're looking at for developers. Um, there's no schedule yet, um, for the north section. Um, for the underpass and Bridge Street, we do have this in our ten-year, um, plan for twenty twenty-three. So you have that done, um, and then the price for that is gonna be about four hundred thousand. Um, we're including some costs in there for, um, flood life mitigation, since we're gonna be right in the river. Um, and there's some other things we added into that, um, to make sure we get it all done. Um, so, let's see, what else? Operations and maintenance typically for our regional trails, we basically split that with cities. Um, so the county is typically responsible for, um, the trails in, um, capital replacement costs. Um, usually ask the cities to do the daily maintenance of the trails, um, whatever is typical for city trails. Um, and then that is usually, um, ironed out prior to construction of this stuff, um, through a J gate. So everybody's on board, you know something happened before it actually happens. Um, let's see, and so I guess, yeah, I think that's the majority of the information. Um, we're just looking for a resolution of support from the city. Um, in my letter to the city, we, the county is asking, um, for some financial participation from the city of fifty percent of the cost for the Bridge Street, underpass, um, the resolution of support for the trail does not tie you to any financial, um, contributions to the project, so, um, I guess right now, I would stand for any questions?
Well, let me start this with seeing that, uh, for viewing public, this is, now, this is just basically a, like a five, ten-year plan. Nothing's gonna be started in construction tomorrow, in other words, but I know, by the way, we could be hearing some things here on Facebook, you know. Okay, so I just wanna clarify that. Um, and, and I, I know trails are good, there's no doubt about it, I'm, I'm pro-trail. Uh, I know people are, except they just don't want to give up land to get it.
Right.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
And if you run an easement, you're gonna have, I know they're trying to work around that issue.
Yep.
But there may be some things, but like I say, people want something, but there might be a cost to getting it, I may be pay for it, um, but they might be able to give up some portion of land to keep to, to have this come to fruition.
Yeah.
But again, I mean, you're talking about two thousand twenty-three for that underpass, and then you're talking long-term or a period of time for the rest of this, and we're dealing with developers. So I just, again, wanna get that on a viewing public, so they understand that. Um, so right now, you're looking for, uh, support, a resolution for this? No money's involved with that, uh, the trail part, but you are looking for some financial support?
We are making a request in the city.
I like that design, by the way, what I saw here about that, uh, underpass, so I think that could work out really well. So it's not a tunnel?
It is not a tunnel, it will just be a paved path underneath.
So basically, that one footing where the bridge is stays, of course.
Yes.
And you dig around that, and put your, you know, drainage wall, whatever you need to do.
Yeah.
Becomes a path, and it's pretty good to me. All right, all right, Sarah, I'll start with you.
My concern with, with that is how much you're gonna, potentially you're gonna have to build it up because, like, this spring and even into early summer, that water is really high under that bridge. And, um, so I think, you know, that's one of my concerns, is just that, you know, we have another really couple big rains and wet spring, we're gonna run into a lot of flooding every day again.
Well, that's why you have to base it on a hundred-year flood plan, and not, we have to, we're engineering.
Right.
I could see, I understand that.
That's, yeah, because just walking that trail, this spring, it was, you know. If, if we would put that trail there, it would be very.
So you don't want to have to have a check.
No, no, not necessarily. Because it would be nice to put that plan, but.
Go ahead, you're on.
But, yeah, I'm, I'm for, um, connecting as many of the trails as we can. I enjoy using those trails for the park. I know that we'll have to find funds for that eventually, to help, but, and then I guess, um, other cities, I mean, I'm assuming you're going to them with the same proposal for their resolutions of support?
Yeah.
And have you gotten any, any, are we the first, or the?
Oh, no, no, we partnered with cities on our regional trail projects, um, quite a bit.
Right, but for this project, have you gone to any of those other, to the?
Um, okay, so.
I mean, this is just for us.
Anoka, yep, so the city of Anoka down here, the trail is mostly built. Um, and actually, the city of Anoka kind of spearheaded that, and so, yeah, we were definitely funding for our, for the city of Anoka to get that done.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, this, this was kind of my first idea, um, other than bringing chickens to St. Francis. This park path was, was my idea, I, I do love the concept, and I like the pictures. Um, I struggle with, um, a county park under a county highway and using St. Francis funds, but I'm not opposed to some cost sharing, we just need to, I think, talk about it, um, in a work session and come to some sort of mutual, mutual agreement on, on that.
Right, it has to be mutually beneficial.
Yeah.
I think the county's open to that. That's it?
Yeah, I almost have to echo what Rob said, I, I like the concept of it, I think too, you're gonna find one hell of a hurdle trying to get the easements on that upper part with the rural people there on the, um, just north of where, where it is, yeah. Uh, with the land there, they're very passionate about their land and tend not to give a little bit up, so, I don't know if that's gonna work. Um, I like the idea of it going under the bridge, um, like, makes it safer for pedestrians, in theory, um, from traffic. Raises more concerns with kids by the river and whatnot, too. But I, I like the idea of avoiding the street. I have no problem with the resolution supporting the plan, as far as the cost, um, our mental said we don't have any budget for it, so that's something we have to look into. I don't know when you're looking for an answer for that, to help fund it, but.
Prefer Blue Forest, I'm sure you agree.
Yeah. I mean, that'd be something that we could talk about in the future, obviously, or whoever's sitting here could talk about, um, by that time, but as of right now, like I say, yeah, it's an unbudgeted cost.
Kelly?
Um, she answered my question as far as, um, keeping maintenance and whatnot after the trail, everybody loves trails, but once they're in, and everybody loves parks, but once they're in, who takes care of, who's the, who's the one who babysits these and refurbishes and takes up vandalism, et cetera, et cetera, so. Um, I also agree, you know, the landowners, this is something for the future, it's good to look down the road. Uh, I wasn't for around abouts years ago, but I've used them and they have a purpose. I wasn't for trails years ago, but you see people using them. I'm a little disturbed with some of the demographics that the Met Council's come up with about our, uh, population getting older rather than younger in some of the region, especially the St. Francis area. But, um, again, younger families are coming here, they want outside is more, they want more opportunities to do that. I know the younger family that are currently live here really embrace the parks that are already within the city, not just the county portion, but they take their kids, the city parks looks three times in a seven-day period. So, uh, I'm all for endorsing, uh, the concept for the future, again, as far as finances. Um, I, I know the same paperwork that you did, and where does the money gonna come from down the road? You know, there's only so much to go around, but we can cross that bridge when we get to it, um, but I'm for endorsing this.
Good fun, I mean, uh, no, I didn't.
But, you know, we do see trails as an important part of, of neighborhoods, um, and they are, and people are getting more physical outside of that. Um, I would, I would just mention on record here that, um, in the packet here, it says the city of St. Francis population is anticipated to grow from seventy to eighteen in two thousand ten to twelve thousand six hundred in two thousand fourteen. And I'd like to know how the Met Council came up with that number of twelve thousand six hundred? Is there somebody we don't know about that they do know about that?
They had different calculations.
Or, or do they, do they plan it variously, but didn't get approved, I'm not sure about that, so I'll just set that for the record. Um, but I, I'm, I'm for it, and, and like I say, it will come down to discussing, you know, financial on the, on the underpass at that time. Uh, we have time to discuss that and plan for it, but, um, um, but as far as the easements, once again, it would be the county negotiating that, working with those landowners?
Yeah.
That, you find. Okay, so thank you so much, Karen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, okay, so now, uh, being that it's a resolution, I need a motion to adopt uh, Noka County River Regional Trail Master Plan, two thousand nineteen amendment request, resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirty-one, resolution of support. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Councilor, I'm about to make a motion, do I have a second? Councilor, you about to make a second, any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion passed. Thank you once again, Karen.
Thank you.
All right, now, our next item, um, is, let me just get to this. It'd be the B G N S, um, dangerous dog, and personally, I, I, the main pronunciation of the name, is that Eel?
Fowl.
Owl?
Fowl, the word for.
El? I hope I'm wrong, correct, I'm sorry. All right, um, Dave?
I'm with Mary and members of the council before you, with the matter of appeal by Christine Bell, thank you for the pronunciation on that, regarding a dangerous dog declaration for the library named Sadie. Uh, we're gonna go through the initial part of it, we're gonna allow the dog owner to, um, come forward, provide comments or any other material, if you would like to apply. At that point, um, we'll come back here, we will, uh, outline the, um, proposed findings of that, and conclusion on that. Once we go through that, and we're gonna just kind of roll through everything, because we want to get everything on the record. The next thing that we're gonna do is have the council have a time to do the discussion, ask questions, uh, either myself or the police chief regarding this matter, and then you have the ability to, to discuss this matter, come to a potential conclusion, on what we want, those findings of fact, conclusion in order. And then, um, once we do that, eventually the city council will take a vote, whether or not to affirm the police chief's designation through his letter, uh, on the dangerous dog designation. So this matter became, uh, before the St. Francis City Council, uh, August fifth, uh, twenty nineteen, now pursuant to a.
Was that August, twelve eighteen?
Uh, today.
August? Okay, okay.
Today, just, just so we get it in the record. Um, for a request for hearing, pursuant to Minnesota statute, um, and we received an appeal request on July fifteen, twenty nineteen. The record that, uh, that you have, and what you're looking at, is the request for the public hearing, uh, pursuant to state statute, um, from Christina, uh, Christina Lynn Bell. Um, the St. Francis Police Department I C R, which has noted the number, uh, for April twenty, twenty nineteen. Uh, St. Francis citation, the number is noted there, dated April twenty, twenty nineteen. A July fifth, uh, twenty nineteen letter from the police chief to, uh, Christina Lynn Bell. A blank form was attached, uh, uh, to use as a request for, uh, hearing pursuant to Minnesota statute, three forty-seven, five. The blank form was attached, uh, uh, to use as a request for, um, hearing pursuant to Minnesota statute three forty-seven five four one. You have the attached statutes in regard to the dangerous dog designation. Uh, the St. Francis Police Department I C R, her case, as noted in the material presented, dated August fifth, twenty eighteen, for the incident occurring on August fifth, twenty eighteen. And then the St. Francis Police Department notice of a potentially dangerous dog dated August fifth, twenty eighteen. Uh, the St. Francis Code, section eight three one, uh, detailing, uh, failure to restrain an attack by an animal. And, uh, just noting that at the here, uh, the department is given the opportunity to present additional materials that they wish, uh, uh, present on this matter and have their statements entered into our record for the other. And then we have, when we record, uh, all of this information as part of the city council meeting. And with that, it will turn out to be you, Mr. Mayor, if you want to call the dog owner forward and have her read her comments or provide additional information.
Right, uh, Mrs. Field, Fell, better, come on forward, please.
I have a slide presentation. Do I have access to the video? I'm still. Yeah. For clarification, were you reading this document?
Initial statement that. Initial statement document that is included, not from the information, it was included in the council packet. And was posted online.
Do you have a flashlight? Uh, no, I can pull up off my Gmail account. I don't know that I have access to that. That's what they told me at city hall that you would have asked to do. Yeah, okay, so you're, I thought you were told to put on a flashlight. Um, no, that's not what she said. I said, it's on a slide presentation on my Google account, Chrome. She said, no problem.
I suppose she wanted to access her Gmail account.
I'll see if I can hit internet. Um, I believe it's trying to. Um, so far it's, it was trying to. Right. Do you need to log into my, like, the rest of the machine? Just like that? It says it's open.
You go to the district website and then it'll make you type in an email and then it usually allows you to.
Yeah.
Open that internet browser.
It says it must close at night because it says it's not available.
So you just need to.
How I did it? So you just, I just waited until. Sorry, you have an hour?
Yeah, I'm full of it, yeah. I don't know, just when you open up the internet browser, it could bring you to that page, I don't know. But I suppose if you're not.
Let's see, try it. Well, I don't know if she's catching so many of these. All right, well, here's me. I have copies. I just can't share with anybody unless you have a copy or. I was told I had access, I would have brought my computer. That's me. I'm fine. It's no problem. So I, here's the situation, um. On four twenty, April twentieth, which is when this police report was made, um. Tanya, which is not the dog owner, lives with the dog. The dog owner is, is, uh, supposedly she let her dogs out, um. I'm going to just, I didn't sit around this. I wasn't prepared to have to print this out. I had all me as a slide, so be wary of this, this is fine. This is kind of my slide presentation. There's no share of that. That's really the slide presentation that I didn't plan on having to print out, um. So it first starts out with, um. I let my dogs out between seven thirty and seven forty-five. Um, I left them out the night before, uh, without any incident. I have a fenced yard that I have gates. Um, they are not used to getting out of their neighborhood. Um, that's not their norm. Uh, somehow my neighbors did have a party, so somehow during the night when I left, I came back home, I let them out between seven thirty, seven forty-five. My gates got opened as, it was my neighbors. Um, I have no idea, uh, odd that all of a sudden it was open. So anyways, they went and roamed the yard of the neighborhood. I went, um, my boyfriend had said, hey, the dogs got out, so we went to look for them. Um, I found them running around, um, between a couple neighbors' yards. One of them happened to be where this incident evidently took place. Um, at Tanya's house and Vince's house, um, where she accuses my dog of biting her dog. Um, which is how this police report got made two hours later. Um, I was not aware that anything happened. I retrieved my dogs, um, and actually was an hour and a half out of town before I even got a text message from Tanya that any incident had happened. Never did I ever see anybody, um, around in the morning. I never saw any dogs. I never saw another human being present. Um, I never even seen them outside. I never even seen anybody in that house, so I had no idea that anything occurred. Um, if you can read starting out, uh, it's a text message that I got from her at nine oh seven, the text started. Um, and like I said, I let my dogs out between seven thirty and seven forty-five over my wife's home. Um, and she's accusing me that my dogs came over and attacked her dog in her yard. And she said the dog's head is bleeding and Vince, which is her boyfriend, is calling the cops. I said, why are you texting me now? My dogs didn't do this. As, because I didn't see anybody present, so why would I think my dogs did this? Um, we have previous history in our children being friends. Um, I used to allow her daughter to come over to my house for about a year and a half. I, um, cared for them in the mornings, dropped them off at school. They cared for my child in the evenings. Um. We had some really bad situations that didn't happen and it didn't end well. Um, and so I kind of thought, well, maybe this is giving back at me. So then you'll see the next text. You were on a mission to get back at me since I will not allow your child to hang out with my child. Um, that situation didn't go well. We had a lot of social media issues, so it became where we no longer are even having any more discussions. So, um, then she says Amber, who is my daughter, came and got them out of my yard. I have pictures. I, and then I said, oh, funny, because she's not even home. Well, she wasn't even home and I wasn't even home. I didn't spend the night and I was there for less than fifteen minutes. And then I was gone. I was, I was an hour and a half away before I even got these messages. And then she said, I have pictures. And I'm thinking, well, what do you have pictures of? I, I don't even know that anything occurred. So then she says, well, the cops said to do this and that. And, and I said, well, I'm shocked. How do I even know that this happened? Um, and then I'm like, well, okay, I hope that DJ, which is the dog, is okay. So then, um, she says, well, maybe it needs stitches. And I'm like, okay, did you see which dog bit him? Because I have two dogs. And then I'm just saying, because I just, I don't want any of this drama. I don't want any more issues with this, um, this, these people. I'm just like, bring me this receipt. I will just pay for it because that's just easier for me than to deal with this. Um, and then she says, well, the bigger one, I believe it happened so fast. Um, and then I said, okay, it really doesn't change anything. Someone must have opened my, hey, blah, blah, blah. I, I don't understand, but. And then she took the dog to the vet and we had this conversation about it and, um. I have a receipt. I paid for the vet bill. It was, it was almost three hundred dollars and then, and then this just got blown way out of proportion. Uh, before we knew it, there was, um, I was being delivered, um. I got one ticket, then before you knew it, I got two tickets, then before you know it, she's a dangerous dog. Um, it's so blown out of proportion. I, I just can't even fathom this. So all of these text messages state one thing, um, as far as she just doesn't know what really occurred. She, she let her dog out. She didn't even watch her dog. She doesn't put her dog on a leash. I have photos in there, which, I'm sorry, they're black and white. I had great pictures to show you that I put in this slideshow. I would have brought my nice photos. Um, I have photos in there because she just lets the dog go out in the yard. I have photos where the dog is actually off the property. She doesn't use a leash. She doesn't have any tags on the dog. She doesn't have anything. I have these was trying to be a responsible homeowner with the fence, with the gate. Unfortunately, somebody opened the gate. I, you know, I, I have another photo in there. I have a brand new fence. I just spent four thousand dollars on a brand new fence. I have a lock. So the only way that that's coming open is somebody cuts it with a bolt. I've done what I can. Um, I don't normally try to let my dogs out. They don't roam the yard. They don't roam the neighborhood. There is another photo in there where there is actually two dogs, her dog and another dog from the neighborhood that is in their yard. So I have multiple dogs in the neighborhood that roam. This is not how I choose to live, but as a whole, my dog, a dangerous dog, is absurd.
Can I have a few moments?
Absolutely.
We have no pictures. I don't know if you have.
There's no pictures.
This is a bunch of text messages.
Do you have, do you have pictures on your phone?
I do now.
Can you send it to one of our email addresses?
Um, I would love to.
Please, we can share.
You're all on the slideshow.
Is it possible to send some of those pictures again to one of our lips?
Yes, I will send it to whoever I shall because, um.
I mean, we can see it. Who's up on here?
Send them to me in a forum to everybody. Send them to me in a forum to everybody.
All right, send me, uh, me in the email or in the course. Um, so what she stated in the police report is she's blaming this, my dog Sadie. Um, but then she says in her text message, it's the big dog. So I'm very confused. Um, she wasn't present when all of this situation happened. There wasn't actually any human being out there to even know what occurred. She stayed. All of a sudden she heard all of this loud noises, but I never heard anything. I was out in the neighborhood with all of the windows down in my vehicle looking for my dogs. So it's really hard to even understand or know if any of this even happened. Um, and what did occur, because nobody was present until after the fact. Um, it, the other question that brings it up is that how was this okay to allow this dog to continue just roaming wherever? And dogs do do what dogs do. This, there was no human present, so who knows? Um, I just stayed in there. My dog did have a leg injury. I don't know what or how this happened. Um, somehow they, they, something happened. Um, he was injured and this would be my big dog. So I, I don't know what else to say with this other than that.
Now, this, this pertains to the before twenty nineteen incident?
This all occurred on four twenty, yep, so.
Well, we have another incident from eight five eighteen.
Correct, and I'm going to get there. So that one happened a while ago, which Sadie didn't do anything. So that's another question that I tried to discuss with the police chief, however, he didn't want to answer any of my questions. The day all of this stuff happened and we had to have this conversation before I got one ticket and then all of a sudden I got a second ticket in the mail. It says I was given it in my presence, but I wasn't. It was delivered via mail to me. Um, there's going to be multiple texts coming. And multiple emails because I can't see who attached that one. Um, the first one I just sent you is just a picture of my new gate, new fence, and then I'm going to try to, might just need yours. So to back this all up, the original situation that ever got these dogs in this is on eight five twenty eighteen. My other dog Cosmo went and knocked a brand new neighbor over and so he knocked her over and, um. And Sadie just happened to be out with him. She didn't do anything, but she went down and got labeled as a dog at large. So now because evidently, I can only assume because she was out, now all of a sudden she gets labeled twice now. I don't understand. I wanted to discuss this with the police chief, but he refused to answer any questions. He told me I needed to wait until I got the paperwork, which took three months to get the paperwork. Meanwhile, I've been to court three times already for this business and still haven't had any answers whatsoever, um, because. Um, because here we are waiting on this.
Where did you go to court for that?
I went to court because I have two tickets. I have two misdemeanors from this incident. One that was given to me on the day of this incident and one that was mailed to me, uh, six weeks later maybe, that just all of a sudden randomly appeared in the mail.
And, and you said, ma'am, you said your, your gate is locked.
My gate is locked now. My previous gate was not locked. But if you look in the text, Tanya actually mentioned to me that I should lock it. But, but it's okay for her to just let her dog, open her door and let her out.
When was the fence replaced?
Uh, I just had it replaced. I think I probably maybe have had it one week now.
Okay, one week.
Yes.
But I'm reading up a report here. Um, so let me just make sure I got the right thing here. This is from eight fifteen eighteen incident.
Which one?
Eight five eighteen.
Oh, yes.
Okay. And on this, it says, uh, the officer said, I asked Phil if she saw what happened and she stated, no. I informed her that, reminded her that the old, that she told me she did not see what happened. Uh, Phil has, was adamant that her dogs would not have done this. You then said, told me that Lisa and her husband came out yelling and screaming and was threatening to shoot her dogs.
Yes, he did.
Phil was advised of the leash laws by the officer. And she stated, she has lived in the area for eleven years and all the older neighbors don't care about the dogs running around. I informed her that the city ordinances does not allow dogs to be at, at large. I informed her that I was going to have, uh, have complete, have to complete, um, the notice of potentially dangerous dog forms. And you, you informed, and she, and Phil informed me to do what I needed to do, uh, provide them with all information. Now, one time, or one of these other reports from four twenty, you said that you were contemplating getting rid of your dogs. Would you make such a, is that true or not?
So the police chief made this, made it appear that that was my only option. Um, and actually, after I realized how, um, I'm sorry, I can't get these pictures sent to you at the moment because I can't talk and try to find all these photos. So, um, so the police chief made this appear that there wasn't any other options. And I had no idea, um, excuse me.
How, how big, uh, let me ask you something.
I had no idea one person's report could literally change your whole life. One person's word could take it...
We're just discussing this right now. Just relax. We're gonna just talk, okay? This is new to us, so we need to hear it up, okay? So let me ask you this. How big of a lot do you have? Is it a city lot, acre or flat?
It's about a quarter. It's not even a third acre.
Okay. But a quarter lot's a little bigger anyways. But okay, so you have a decent fenced-in backyard, would you say?
It's just bothering my house.
Right, is it, is it large enough for the dogs to exercise?
Oh, absolutely. And they're always in the yard. If they get out, it's fine.
Okay, is it, I'm just asking you questions, ma'am.
I understand.
Is it a chain link fence? Is it a wood fence, grassy fence?
I always had chain link fence.
Okay. And now, what did you have before for this chain?
Honestly, Dick was upgraded. With stronger chain link parts and a lot of new ones. Because the original homeowners didn't, they did a DIY and it was a very shoddy deal. And I just got a brand new one. That's all I did. I didn't change anything of it other than just, I just got a...
And that's, that door, is that, is the only gate to it then?
One gate now.
One gate that I see. And the rest, the rest of it, is a wood fence around the yard that I'm looking at? Is that right or, or is it all chain link?
It's all chain link. There isn't a wood fence on the very back. That's my neighbor's, but I have my own chain link.
To that too?
I have it in front, I have my own. I have four sides of chain link that I own.
Okay, so the wood fence we're looking at, of course, is that neighbor you just mentioned?
Is owned by the, the neighbor.
But you have your fence in front of that?
Correct, yep. That's a whole other chain link.
Okay, so, um, the yard is big enough to suffice the three dogs you have? I take it you have two?
I have two. So in that first report, I, I have three. I only have two.
And those are ladder doodles?
Yep.
Okay, the beagles are?
Yep, she's gone.
Um...
So I can't find, I just can't.
Sure, let me ask you this. The, the fence that you have now, with the new fence you put up, has, has a lock on?
Yes, this gate is specially designed so that you can actually, so with the old gate, I went and I put my own lock on after this whole incident happened so that nobody could open it. But this one has a special design, so I actually can put a lock right underneath the latch. So now it just has a lock there. And you can see, if you can zoom in, you can actually see the lock is there. I just put that portal today. But this one, I can't get a sign, but this one is, you can see how, this is how, this is just one where her dog just roams freely. So I have photos, I just can't get it right now. I'm just... I have photos where this dog is literally in the street. So this is the dog.
This is?
This is the dog that is... That's the one that she accused my dogs of biting. And, but this is the dog that's not on a leash.
Okay, this is the one that was bit?
Correct.
So let me ask you this. So, um, you do now lock it?
I have since this happened because...
Of the April twentieth incident?
Correct. I can't hear somebody opening my gate and, and, and having all this happen.
Okay, um...
I shouldn't, I mean, I shouldn't have to be in here. I have cameras now too. I have everything. My whole house is surrounded. I, I shouldn't have to live like this.
Okay, um...
These are family pets. I don't have dogs that are here to, to hurt people. It's, they're not, they are convulsions. They are not here to hurt anybody.
I understand that you paid the vet bill just because you wanted to be done with it or whatever?
Absolutely. Not because I admit guilt or that I think that anybody did something wrong. Dogs set out, dogs do whatever.
Did you, did you see the injuries of the dog?
I did not. I did not. I don't even see, I only...
The officer see the injuries to the dog?
Yes.
Supposedly there's a picture. I have no idea. I've never seen it.
I don't have it with me, but... Officer, the floor, we should give the kids a...
The police report says there's a picture on file. I've never seen it. I didn't get it when I called the police, the police.
And that's for the four twenty incident, right? But would you admit that on the eight five incident, uh, the dog, you know, did knock down the individual?
I, I mean, I, I know they got out and they run because they just get so excited. This is so out of their territory. They are not used to getting out of the fence. I don't know, but I'm not gonna say that he wouldn't because that would be him because he would be so excited. He isn't very tall. If he stands up, he's very tall. So it would be very...
What kind of weight, how big is this dog? Weight weight?
So, so we're talking two different dogs. So this is not, this dog on the eight five is not the dog that I am here about today. So I don't want you guys to be confused. He, he is a, he is a long, tall doodle. So he's more poodle, if that makes sense. So he's got really long, but he stands up here if you stand him up.
Seventy-five pound dog, hundred pounds?
He's probably seventy-five, maybe, but it's easy. I'm taking him back this year.
So if he were to get excited, he could run into somebody?
Oh, probably, yes. She's a small baby like me. Yes, he could knock me over if he came around the corner for sure. He weren't her parent.
And then, and then she states the dog...
I don't even know.
That she had, the dog had, your dog had the chihuahua's head in its mouth?
That's what she said. I didn't even see this. I was around the corner. This whole, that whole situation didn't go down well because number one, they are brand new neighbors and those two chose to come at me like this. This is how I was approached. You have two grown adults coming across me. It's just little old me in my yard. And they're screaming across their yard like that. I don't know what anybody that's gonna go, it's gonna go about. So that's why that whole situation didn't go down well. That was my very first meeting, ever meeting them as my new neighbors. And I've lived in my neighborhood. I've been in my house twelve years. I have never, ever been approached by any, and I've had a lot of turnover in my neighborhood. And I've never had such a, a group of people that I do right now. It's very interesting and I can't say it's very fun. A lot of people that don't wanna talk and they don't wanna communicate and it's very sad. And so when I'm approached that way and if you're coming at me and then you threaten to shoot my dog, things are not gonna go well. Hence, you see in the police report, things didn't go well. I don't appreciate it.
Did you make a report for the threats on your home?
It says, I put, he, he sort of, right? So what I have learned, I appreciate what you're asking me. What I have learned is that, um... How can I see this to explain? Uh, what I have learned is police reports, they can choose what they wanna say. And I'm not gonna live like that. Not everything is written that should have been written.
Okay, um, this picture, Todd, that we're talking about, does it show an injury?
I have.
All right, well, we need to see the picture. Okay, we should send that to counsel.
I, I know that she said, I, I don't know if I have in the text. I know she said there was four staples and honestly, I would have taken them out because I can. I, I, I do this for a living.
But she got the vet, the vet bill showed that there was supposed to be...
Well, I don't have a copy of, I don't think I have a copy of the vet bill. I just know how much it was. I have a copy to check. I just paid it. I honestly, I don't care. I, I honestly, I don't care. You tell me it was that much. I, I think it had been some, some of the, every some month. She told me it was four, four staples. I, I, I were a human and I was going to take them out for her and not make her go back to the vet. But then when this got to be so dramatic and realize how many tickets I got and how many times I have to go to court and I'm still going to court.
Right, but Matt, understand something here. This is the first we're hearing about this through a packet we received on Thursday last week. So I'm trying to ask questions, as counsel will hear in a little bit, to find out all the man, all the facts. So for me, I mean, this is all new to us, like I said. So, so to me, I mean, it, it may not be a big thing to you, but four staples is something to somebody, okay? So we have to look at that and say, okay, now where there was an injury, a justifiable legitimate injury that was taken care of. I mean, you paid three hundred, uh, but I'd like to know about the injury and the staples that were, I wanna know, I wanna see that, okay? Um, but it's not, and I'll start this, so again, the conversation will go to counsel on this. Uh, is the other party here, by the way? Or is it, nobody?
They won't be coming.
They won't be coming, okay.
No, and that's what he can't leave my side, his intention, because I had a conversation already with him and they don't want anything to do with this. So they didn't want to make it, they didn't want this to do anything. They, they were fine once I paid the bill. They were fine with it. But then, so they got...
You're telling me they're fine with it once you paid the bills?
Yep. And I have a voice message, yes, because she told me she didn't wanna press charges. People don't understand the law. People don't understand how the law is written. People wanna call the police, but they don't understand the ramifications of making those phone calls. People need to start talking to people. This is what I'm saying. You can't just do things and then back out. So I, the police report says one thing and she's told me three different stories. She doesn't know which dog did it. She doesn't know exactly what happened. This is why I'm here. This is the only reason I'm here to fight this is because nobody knows what happened. Who's to say there wasn't another dog out there? Nobody knows. There was nobody present.
Okay, was, was the same, uh, larger lap, you know, lap, uh, lap or pool, uh, whatever?
Yeah.
Was this, was this ladder doodle, whatever? Is this dog, was that the same one from the other incident too in both incidents?
My dog was out, both of my dogs were out there.
Right, but it was the same dog as in both incidents or was it different?
It was reversed. So the, okay, so this dog that I'm here today about is not the same dog that is...
Eight five was not the same?
Correct. And this is, this is why I wanted to have a conversation with the police chief about it, but he denied my conversation because how do you declare somebody engaged or saw when the first police report was not written directly towards her? You need to define clarity and you cannot blame it on two dogs when that, that police report is very clear. It is directed at one dog, even though there was three dogs that got out. It was specifically focused on one dog. How did you then take that and lump them all together? I have pulled, I looked at the city ordinances. I have spent three times taking off of work and went to court and they can't do anything. They keep playing games, pre-trial, 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 because they don't know what to do.
Okay, I, that...
And neither does anybody else.
All right, let me ask some questions here. Okay, please. Um, the beagle's not playing anymore?
The beagle is gone.
Okay, the, are they the same size ladder doodles? One's smaller than the other, I take it?
Sadie is sixty pounds.
All right, Sadie, then Sadie was the eight five incident or no?
Backwards. Sadie is the four twenty incident supposedly, but the homeowner doesn't have her story straight. She does not know.
And the bigger dog, the bigger one was the eight five?
Correct.
Okay. And how, how old are these dogs?
Three and a year and a half.
Okay, which one's he gonna have? Sadie?
Yes.
The one from eight five? No, not from...
The one from four twenty, the one we are here today about.
Let me let this put this down. Sadie is on the four twenty, right?
Yes.
And what was on the eight five one?
Cosmo.
Cosmo.
He's the big dog.
Cosmo, Cosmo's a sixty pounder?
He's an eighty pound. He's a, he is a definite big dog. It is very obvious. He is definitely not anywhere close to the size of her.
Okay, so he's the, he's the bigger dog, the eight five that knocked down the lady, right?
He's at least twenty pounds bigger than she is, yes.
Okay, so then, and then Sadie would be about sixty pounds?
Yes. He can stand over Sadie, if that makes sense.
All right. All right, uh, let's see. And, you know, these two incidents are within eight and a half months apart. So, um, you're talking about the first incident was with the new neighbor and the second incident was with somebody who loved water, that you did some child care on there.
Yeah, the dogs have been, they've been interacting with each other before, so it's not like they ever knew.
Todd, let me ask you, um, on the dangerous dog, uh, clarification, what does this really pertain? So counsel understands this.
Okay.
How serious is this?
Well, a dangerous dog clarification, um, can give a couple of alternatives. One is registering Sadie for right insurance, uh, and like that, which Christina was given the opportunity to do initially. Uh, and it says it clearly in the dangerous dog form that she received. Um, and to, to start it all, potentially this dog, or issue went down as long to bite someone on her domestic animal approval, um, which the officer in her report indicates by, by the, the other person involved. Um, by that description, the officer determined Sadie was the one involved, left side. Um, different officer, different report. This April, sergeant about on scene and determined that the same dog had, uh, was involved in a separate incident based on witness description. Um, were not there when it occurs. Uh, Christina was not there when it occurred or didn't see it. Uh, we had two different dog owners say this dog was involved in two different incidents.
The same dog?
According to the police report, the officer gave...
Just, just a minute.
According to the information the officer gave, the same, that's what I thought. I was preparing to give your report and see...
And that was the information from on the side of the, of the individual?
Right. But they, they, they said it didn't want us to give us.
Let me ask you this, ma'am. Are these two dogs, are they the same color?
No, this is like, if you read the police report, you can see your only information. How can you even state that?
Okay, so, Cosmo's black?
Cosmo is dark brown.
Dark brown, and what's Sadie?
Sadie is yellow, white and yellow. You need to state them. So I wanna state where you're coming on from this.
The witness described the dog as a brown dog.
No, she did not.
I'm reading the part here.
Are you reading eight-five, are you reading eight, or four-twenty? Are we talking about eight-five, or are we talking about four-twenty?
I'm talking about both. Dog, please.
No, four-twenty is very different than eight-five.
Yeah, I'm just trying to... Eight-five, it says there are chocolate labradoodle, golden labradoodle and a Beagle, all I see here. Three dogs were in a fenced property, in Bark and Valley, and she walked back to her home. Lisa stated she was standing at the end of her driveway while her dog, a Chihuahua, was going to the bathroom. Lisa informed, she was, you know, this is all down here with the Kenny, so, this is very dirty to take it on with this. So, comes down to, uh, state. Lisa informed she was trying to run into her home, but the neighbor dogs kept jumping out and trying to get to her. Lisa stated she went inside and told her husband, stated that she went outside, and fell, yelling and cussing at her. Said, apologized, and Lisa stated, oh. All right, listen, this really becomes down to a he said, she said, because we don't know it. If you guys weren't here, she weren't there, now we're taking this from somebody who didn't even take the time to show up, to talk to us, okay? So I'm gonna get to some comments here from counsel, and then we're gonna see what we can do here, okay? All right. Caleb, I'm gonna start with you on this.
Thank you. I can appreciate your composure during all this, you've stated a certain case. Again, a police officer comes on site and writes a report, they're trained to do such a thing. Can I ask what the disposition, disposition of the citations are at this point? Would it the court, the judicial, the real judicial system determine at this, where you find, or was it put on hold, or you said it was pre-trial, or, so there's no mistreatment?
There's certainly pre-trial, because we haven't done anything, they had nothing to go with other than a citation. So, the city attorney, state attorney, I don't even know, they don't know what to do, so we're hanging out in pre-trial.
Do, other than...
I have two misdemeanors that of course I'm fighting, just like I'm fighting this. Because the stories don't match up.
The misdemeanor's related to the citations in there, is it?
Two citations, one for a dog at large, and one for a dangerous dog.
Okay.
They both are a misdemeanor.
Okay.
They're two different court cases.
And your last time at court, the last time?
It was in July, my next court case is in September.
And this again, it was, uh, extended because there would be more investigation on their side, city side?
They had nothing to go by except for a police report.
And is it the city attorney is doing this, or prosecutor?
That's what I'm saying, if you want an update on that, I can communicate to him and try to get an update.
We, we should have that, I mean, I, we're, we're not judges up there either. I, I guess I just still don't have enough information, and again, I would appreciate the fact, I know the, the city's involved, now the city, or the, the prosecuting attorney is now, it's in their lap, but the people who brought the charges could've either come to bolster the case that these dogs are differently dangerous, or they decided not to show, because they don't have to, and maybe expose themselves, but you're here to defend yourself, and I guess I admire that point to, uh, the information. But again, trained officers write a report, if they, they go with the information that's front of them, I mean, if you, if both ladies were in the street talking, you know, the officer gives one report, another report, um, and I guess that's what the prosecuting attorney's job is, to decipher what it's all about. But I, I don't have enough to offer anymore than that right now, I'd like to see one for me.
Right, the, the problem that I ask you right here is because if you weren't there, and, and, and those the officers kept talking to one side, it would've been nice to see this other side here, so we could understand a little bit better, because we're just getting one version. Joe, what do you got to say?
I had a couple of questions, so Todd, uh, how many incidents typically does it take to deem a dog dangerous? Is it just one that you can do that with your...
First time, it's labeled potentially dangerous, and if it happened to be, then it's labeled dangerous.
And then, just reading the text, of course, just hearsay, but I got some question I can't hold, is does any, did any of the responding officers, it's not in the report, that they seen any pictures of the dogs in the yard or anything? Nobody witnessed the dog actually biting the other dog?
I believe the officer did this.
And then, uh, okay, yeah, I guess that's the only questions I had. I'd like to see more information too, I got a lot of issues with this situation. One, we don't, we didn't sign up for counsel to do these kind of things, like the abatements, unfortunately, it's part of our job. Nothing anybody wants to deal with, they're calling about a dog dangerous. Their family members, people take it personal. I'd like to see more information, I think the police officers are doing their job, trying to do their job to the best of their ability. Todd, I'm, I'm, I'm a reformist, I'm a little linguist, okay? I typically do not like police officers dealing with them. I understand where you're coming from, as far as some of the disdain for police officers. I don't have an issue with police officers, I have an issue with, with those that abuse their authority or take it to the extreme. Todd, in my opinion, ever since I've been, uh, sitting here, I mean, I guess I didn't really meet him much beforehand, but ever since I've dealt with him, he's always dealt with things honorably. One of the most honorable police officers I've met, so some of the things you've said about him, I find hard to believe. I'm not calling you a liar, I'm just telling you my respect about you, okay? As far as the dog situation, I'd like to see more information, I'd like to see some sort of update on the court cases. I think a lot of the hearsay, and I don't even, I would like to see this delta civilly with, with the, with the city now. If we, if, my responsibility, I feel so much, is protect the public regardless. Um, that doesn't mean labeling somebody anything at any given point, I think what it is though, is if we don't do that, what liability do we open up the city to as well? Because that's kind of what our job is here too, is to make sure that the, the people, not protected from dogs necessarily, but let's say if a dog was dangerous, gets out and does something, and we didn't deem it dangerous, does that open us up to a huge liability at that point? Or does it not? That's my question for Dave.
We can get you an exact answer on that, I can say generally, no, there would be more of a political liability, I mean. There are standing court.
Okay, I appreciate that, because politics is ridiculous, so, what'd I say up here?
I mean, by the way, Todd, you know, when you're saying, uh, uh, first one would be a potential, second one would be dangerous, is there a timeframe in that? Or just incident by incident?
I believe, I don't, not, not working on a timeframe.
All right, Joey, then?
Yeah.
Okay, Rob?
Okay. I read both of the reports, uh, one, I see golden-colored dog, um, attacked DJ. Like I said, that's a report. Um, in the other report, it clearly states that it was brown dog. So, my personal, um, view on this would be, uh, maybe labeling both of them potentially dangerous, um, and that's probably about as far as I could go with this, this sounds. Unfortunately, the, you know, the, the dogs are stuck in the middle between, um, bad neighbors. And I'm a dog advocate, and I know dogs don't like other dogs, and it happens. That's why we have leash laws and things like that. But right now, there's just way too much information that we don't know. But based on the police reports, I believe it to be two separate dogs, and I'm not willing to, to take one dog over the other as a dangerous dog, because it, it's clear.
To me, how do we know it was under vote or revoked?
Exactly.
There's a lot of information, I think.
It is a twelve one, I have a twelve one, and they are...
Feeding the liars?
Yeah, they're, they're a big dog syndrome, and, but, you know, we don't know, did the Chihuahua run a foot into your yard, and the other dogs chase? We don't know. So, all we would do is speculate, and I'm not here to, to make a decision on, on a homeowner, a pet owner, neighbors, peoting over a pet. So, that's where it's due.
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, there's so many questions, I think, I think I have more questions now than I did before, but, um, I guess one of my questions is, has our animal control been involved in any of this? As, have they, I know, in other cities, sometimes they evaluate the dog, they have them for a period of time to see how they do around other dogs, to see, um, how they do with other people. I know that that has been done in other cities. Um, so, um, and in one of the things, one of the areas that it said something about animal control, and I'm confused as to did animal control advocate, or is that something that happens if we deem this dog dangerous?
So if you deem it dangerous, you have to notify them.
Notify animal control at that point, because it said, it said something about, that it would be at, it said, so the time and place that the dog was declared dangerous, um, the telephone number and contact person with the dog is, will be kept, and then they obviously list, notify animal control and care.
Where the dog is or will be.
Yeah.
I can give you some examples. She gets groomed regularly, she goes to her room, we have no problem. So, it's like a play area too, if I don't pick her up on time. Like, there's multiple, small, big dogs there, we never have issues, so this isn't like it's an issue. I, I don't know what happened that day, I, and nobody was present, there was not one single human. She states in the text, she wasn't out, she literally opened the door, let the dog out, and closed the door and went inside. She didn't come out until she heard something. So, nobody, there was no human present to find out what happened. She thinks she saw which one was on top, but she doesn't even know, if you look at her story, she says in there multiple times, she doesn't know, it happened so fast. So, she doesn't know, but she told one story in the police report. I tried to discuss this with the chief, he didn't wanna have time with me. Whether he could or not, I don't know, this is not my deal, but I wouldn't fight this if I didn't feel like I had a story to say. If I didn't feel like there was a reason, I wouldn't, I don't need that, I can tell you, I promise you with all my well-being, she knows, she is not this way, she is on my heels twenty-four-seven, this is a lover, this dog does everything I ask of her. She can go with the groomers, I don't even have to put her on a leash, she'll be right here next to my side. But I do if I need to, but I don't let her roam, I am not a roamer. I think, you know, I have a picture, I'm so sorry, I'm just so upset that, you know, there's supposed to be a computer. I have a picture of the other dogs down in the cul-de-sac, I live at the start of a cul-de-sac. The other dog next door that comes over in the yard, I have a picture of those two dogs out there. There's other dogs at the end of the cul-de-sac that roam, it's not my dogs that roam. Jesus, the two times my dogs get out, of course, these people have to call the police, it's just ridiculous. I'm not calling the police, I don't have good experiences.
All right, I'm thinking, say more.
No.
Okay, okay, no. I'm gonna stay here, um, I happen to agree with Joe on our police chief, um, um, he's an honorable man, and I've learned, I'm, I'm involved with J-Leg with him, I'm with him a lot, um, and I don't see that from him, unless they, same, your line of any kind. I don't see that myself, but, um, I also agree with, with, uh, Rob, I have to be a dog lover myself, so, um, I, I love animals. So anyway, uh, I think I have somewhat of a, of a solution here, and I wanna bring this to the attention of counsel here. This is a very hard situation, and I agree with counsel, our new board. One of the jobs I don't like doing is abatements once a year, and I don't like doing stuff like this, this is not like that, but it's part of my job, our job, we have to do this. So, being that the one real new catalyst in the whole figure here, is that you put up a new fence, okay? A very good secure fence that can be locked, okay? That is a big change to me from what was done before. Okay, you got a loose, supposedly a fence that wasn't exactly strong enough, or, or, or with restraint or whatever, and so that was a, a, a vulnerability. And now you've taken that out of the picture, so, huh?
With a lock.
With a lock, so, what I think could be a solution here would be to list these dogs as potential dangerous, and start the clock now, okay? And you have said that you don't have them out roaming, okay, and that you'll keep them in your yard and whatever, and locked. And so, if we never hear about this again, it stops right there. If we hear about it again, that changes everything, okay? And so, um, um, I don't want to, to list this dog as dangerous, but as counsel, our new board stated is, if the next time it got out and, and, and bit someone, and I'll give you an example, uh, my younger, one of my, uh, granddaughters lives in Minnetonka, in a very nice neighborhood, by the way, which would probably like where it is me again, they are very close, everybody talks to everybody, watches out for everybody, kind of the way I grew up, you know, but things have changed, so, um, um...
Pay you with?
Huh?
Pay you with?
Anyway, um, so, my younger, one of my daughter, my granddaughter's rather, got bit last year, and it was a good bite, it was a bite you could see. Uh, we both talked to our son, uh, but didn't wanna say anything to anybody, but he did tell us that the dog has done it a few other times. That's the responsibility, the owner should've been noted by, and that dog should be dangerous. Now, that doesn't mean there was ill intent or whatever, but three times, and my granddaughter had a bite, you could see the bite marks, not one, but multiples. And I was surprised that my son didn't do anything about it, but of course, it was in the, they know each other, and blah, blah, blah. So what I'm saying here, and bringing up to attention of, of counsel here is, again, because potential is different than dangerous, okay? And there was some potential in two incidents in eight and a half months, but the fence was a, was a variable factor. So you've changed that, okay? So you've done some security, you said you had cameras and stuff like this, so you've made some changes on your end for the positive, in my opinion. And I think counsel would agree with that. So, if we could do this, and list this as a, as potential, you are now in charge of it, it's your responsibility, which you know already, the dogs are there, they don't get out again, we don't hear about it again, it's a done deal. If we hear about it again, or if somebody should cut your locks, or whatever, but you got security in place now, things a little different now. I think you've taken the right steps here, but for us, it's hard when it's a he said, she said type of thing. I respect you for coming here, I wish everyone would've come here too, very hard to judge off one. And of course, you have police officers that are made, are, 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 are trained in reporting, but they're only getting one set version too, by the way. And there are some changes we've seen here in the reports between which dog did what, and blah, blah, blah. So, if counsel would go along with this, I would say that, and, and chief, we could list it as a potential, and start the clock now, and, and just go forward. And then, therefore, like I said, with your security, uh, 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 equipment in place, and your new fence, and everything like that, and your awareness of it, all that, I think that would probably solve this problem for our governor, that that would be agreeable to you?
Absolutely.
I have a question there.
Yes.
Wait, if we do agree upon this, what happens to the pending citations that are hanging over the...
Yes, well, tell us what happens with that.
That's gonna have to be handled by the prosecutor's office.
Can we give any recommendations, one way or the other?
Prosecutor has discretion on how they're gonna proceed on this, I can convey whatever, you know, the council signed on, I can certainly do that.
Okay, that would be good, that would be, hopefully, be beneficial and not hurt, or at least a, a direction from us to them, or the court.
I can certainly do that.
Okay, we would, we would have to do that. Okay? Um, well, thank you for bringing that to my attention. Is, is, is counsel, Todd, is that something we can work with?
Uh, possibly, I just, you know, from the report in August, there could be some, if this problem, there are, there are, there could be some questions as far as, you know, if this dog wasn't initially labeled potentially dangerous at last August, now it's going to be, uh, all the report says from...
So it wasn't potentially, it has not been?
One of them, one of them. Maybe both of them, I'd, I'd look at it on that too, but, uh, there could be some discrepancies there, I guess, if, if this were to come up again, and we were to label the other dog potentially dangerous, now that wasn't...
Well, we have to know which dog did what, and it seems like we don't know that for a fact, and that, that's...
Again, when I read police reports, I trust my officers, that they did their reports, they get the information, like the, the statements they made out there. Uh, the police report does indicate Christina provided the name of Sadie as the one who made the attack, and I'm sure that the officer prepared a report about them, uh, not just to call it.
So Sadie's the one on four-twenty, and Cosmo's the one on eight-five, so Sadie would be the one who listed as potential, okay? The other one would not, as of today.
I would have to work, they, they both may have that.
Okay, and you could check on that, but would that be agreeable on that level to you?
I'm agreeable with that, I, I would like the counsel to also, we need to establish some further clarity, because this can be ongoing, when does this ever end? So is this a lifetime of being dangerous? I, I mean, this, this issue, I can't be the only one to ever come, I searched and searched and searched for cases, and I come up with empty-handed, you can't tell me this is the first case ever in St. Francis.
First one I've ever dealt with, personally.
I understand that, I searched.
And mayor, counsel, in the statute, I believe, plus sailor, in six months, after that, there's no dangerous dog, you know, it can come back and...
Dangerous dog.
And taking a lot of...
But I wanna know about potential dangerous, we need to have some kind of section, limitations, this can't go on forever.
Okay, so...
And, and, you know, like, uh, this is something I'll, I can bring forward eventually, but I, I'm fine with that, I, they're not dangerous, I'm fine with that.
And like I said, the, the, the factor that's changed is the security put in place, and the new fence locked. That changed everything in my mind anyways.
And I'm fine with that, it's, it's here nor there, what is absolutely absurd, and just as I know, is the fact that I had to do that when this woman can allow her dog to just let it out. This is absolutely absurd that that's okay, so, you will be getting a lot of phone calls from me.
It's not okay, that's why we asked for it.
Just so you know.
So if you don't call, you should start.
I will.
Yeah, so you should start calling.
I will.
Okay, and that's, that's not...
I will, I'm proud of you.
See, because one of the things we say to people about code compliance, stuff like that, if you don't bring the issue to us, we don't... if you don't bring the issue to us, we don't know what the issue is. And the police don't remind anyone of this, council, reminds our staff. So you have to ask for a problem as well. I mean, we can only do what we can do at this level here. I'm trying to negotiate something. I'm trying to negotiate.
I will.
Well, I understand you. You really don't have to negotiate, you know, babysit because you have a locked area in. Your, your dogs are in a fenced area, fenced area. As long as they don't get out, it seems like there's no problem, in my opinion.
But it's $5,000 out of my pocket. That's ridiculous.
But we, I commend you for doing it. We did not tell you to do that.
You didn't need to. It's, it's my responsibility. They're my dogs.
Yes.
I, I want them. I'm not taking, I'm not doing anything. I'm fighting for her for a reason.
All right, so for, for this sake here, so that we can move on here and, and hopefully get past this.
Mm-hmm.
Do I need to take a vote on this? Or can I just get a consensus from, uh, council here?
Probably take a vote on this. It sounds like the consensus of the council is that Sadie should not be, uh, determined as a dangerous dog and the council should affirm that motion in second. Because that's the dog that we're dealing with here.
Okay.
And I know that the chief is going to have to go back and look and see if there's more information on the other dog. We can pull up at that. But the, what's right in front of, in front of you right now is whether they're going to label Sadie as a dangerous dog or they take a motion in second and say that she is not a dangerous dog.
And then do we clarify to say it potentially or no?
The, the potential is still there.
Okay, just not dangerous.
Just not dangerous.
And then does it clarify? You said something earlier about a six month timeframe? So six months left from?
Once declared dangerous.
Oh, once declared dangerous, okay, okay. So we're not doing that, okay? All right, so do I have a motion to declare Sadie, uh, the labradoodle, um, not dangerous? Right? Councilman Mulebauer makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Councilmember Robinson makes a second. Any further discussion? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. And I would just clarify one thing. If you see a problem on the other side, let the police know. Let us take care of that, okay?
I will. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Can we, uh, ask the, request the attorney then to follow through with the, what are the actions we've taken this evening and what our thoughts were?
Yes.
To the president?
Yeah, he's ready. Yeah, he's.
Hey, just to clarify on the potential liability concern.
Yes, yes. Okay. And bring it to the attention of the, of that prosecutor, that, uh, new fencing, security, whatever.
Yep, oh, yes.
All there.
Absolutely. That will be convinced.
Okay, good. Okay, now, um, it looks like I have a public hearing to put forth on the 2020-24. Ah, that's a three doesn't play. Um, okay, uh, let me just get here, please. Okay, I, do you want me to discuss this first or just go right to the other carry?
I can just give a brief 30 second overview, open up the comment, close it. Discuss it and get done. Uh, underburners of the council, uh, as was presented, I believe, back in June, the capital improvement plan, major changes from last year to this year. I'll just highlight them real quick. The levy increase, $10,000 as per plan, uh, several years. Then it'll increase $10,000 every year. The fire department added CPR device and hose replacement. Uh, staff added about 15% to road projects just to ensure we have enough money going forward. Um, city hall and fire station improvements that were discussed. The work session were added for 2020. Uh, park projects are still unresolved. We have a longer list of park projects and we have money to pay for them. And I think that's no secret. Uh, water improvements have been added to coincide with road improvements. Every time we put in work session, uh, the sewer upsize and a 227 to accommodate the 12s could be put into, put into the plan. And then Culver, uh, for still water replacement on 245th. Those are the major changes. Other than that, should be essentially close to what we saw last time around.
Okay, so I can show the public hearing right then? Okay, so let me, um, now, at 7:54, I open a public hearing on the 2020-24 capital improvement plan. Anyone in the public to approach us? Okay, I don't see anybody. So, um, I will close the open hearing at 7:54. Okay, um, what I liked about this capital improvement plan, by the way, and, and, uh, had, had discussion with, uh, Paul on some items today and Joe about some items today. What I liked about it is I saw, you know, um, the, the, the capital improvement plan, what I liked about it was it was the, uh, existence or coexistence with kind of software, which really, for our sakes, uh, explains things on justification, on, on timeframe, the 2020 to 24 timeframe in, um, gives you how you're going to break it down and where those funds are coming from. Um, I thought this, I, I like this type of preemptive proactive type of thinking because we know what, instead of waiting till the dam breaks, we're ahead of the dam breaking. And I think this is just good budget, solitary budget, uh, solid budgetary thinking, which is what we've been doing here for couple, two, and a half years now. So to me, uh, I just like, again, how you break it all down, uh, by description and, and we're looking farther out. Uh, uh, but I also want to bring the attention here for council. Uh, the plan software gives you, uh, gives you the equipment and, and, and discussion, the justification for it, and then by the dates where the money is coming from expenditure, where the date's coming from. But it's the actual breakdown here in these, uh, like, for instance, if you look at page 10 of the document, which is actually on a packet, page 12 of the CIP, if you have it, um, in front of you, uh, that will show you the, the, uh, beginning cash and cash reserves and ending cash and stuff like that. And just bring this to council's attention because that's the real numbers you want to look at, okay? I have discussed this with Joe, um, and Joe tells me that the monies are in place. And, uh, uh, this is important, uh, so that we're not, we're not, uh, uh, planning something that we can't fund, okay? And, uh, and these things here can be anywhere from three to five to 10 years out. Um, but I like the fact that, for instance, our meter, our automatic meter reading that we put on for discussion purposes actually came to fruition faster because we had it in play. Uh, the, what I like about this, once again, is again, how kind of software complements it, but that we're looking preemptively and proactively ahead and budget accordingly. And we're not, you know, we're not waiting again till the dam breaks to try to solve the problem, you know, until a roof caves in. We're actually catching things ahead of time. Like with our maintenance programs on the buildings that we started to do, which, uh, allows us to keep more even keel on the expenditures of the buildings. And I'm not talking about a, you know, lightning strike or water boiling up or something. But on an even keel basis, I would think Paul would agree that we're probably, we're pretty much on top of our maintenance now. Uh, are there things we should be doing coming up here in the future? Yes, uh, just as the, you know, recently TBOs and technical orgals on, on equipment and structures and. Um, but I'm in terms of the constable in the other discussion, but, um, I'm very happy with the capital improvement. I think it really, really works well. And I don't know, um, I actually asked Paul this earlier. Um, I don't know how you did it before without kind of software. I just really don't. Um, would you, would you all agree staff wise that kind of software helps make it easier with the capital improvement plan?
I know Paul uses it quite a bit.
I know I was with Paul when he first started doing the justifications and that. But I, I like the fact that, I mean, you police know that. Squad cars for police, fire two, by the way. I mean, uh, allows you to see it and, uh, put it all in perspective. And then I, I think it really complements the actual base seat, I think, plan. You know, I, I like it. Like, I think it's worth every dollar we spent on it. So Sarah, I'm going to open this up to you for discussion now.
No, we haven't.
Okay.
I think it looks good.
Rob?
I don't, I don't have any questions either. It looks really good.
Okay.
Nothing to add. Uh, I think it's a great report. I want to thank everybody who had input on it. Um, comprehensive and that, uh, the numbers are, you know, you look at it and then it's the goals of what it takes to make the city go. And it's not written in stone. As you said, we changed the weather in your situation. We moved it up eight to 10, 12 months there because of a economic sense and was good for the city. And there's other things I saw here that also that, uh, lawnmower for one and new lawnmower coming down the road and just, that was just a snapshot. But, um, we can change things as needed. And if there is a small leak into the M, we can plug it because we know what our resources potentially are down the road. So, uh, thank you.
Right, I just want to clarify once again with council is that, you know, you, you look at the, the justifications and the description justifications. Once again, on kind of software, it gives you the numbers and all that. But it's the actual budgeting of the numbers before, that document before each one that shows you the reserves and the, and the end balances and stuff like that. That's what you want to go by as far as our end, okay? Um, but I, I like it very much. So, um, do we need a motion to accept this tonight?
Motion to approve.
So, uh, do I have a motion to, uh, approve or adopt? Approved.
Either or.
Oh, okay. Um, to add a motion to adopt the 2020-2024 capital improvement plan?
I'll make that one.
Councilman Huglitz makes that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Mulebauer makes a second. Uh, any further discussion? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Very good work, Stan. Thank you. Okay, all departments, very good. I, I, I thank you very much for it. You see it on a daily basis. We see it on our basis, which is a little hard to catch up on. But anyway, okay, new business. Um, let me get that here. I'll replace here. Okay, we're going to move on to, um, ordinance 251. Um, ordinance 251, second series, commending chapter 10, section 71, L1, light industrial, to include storage facilities within the permitted additional use permit, CUP, and amending chapter six business regulation and licensing, adding section 14, storage units, self-storage units, first reading.
Mayor, council, before your tonight's consideration of the new storage facility requirements, back in September of 2018, council placed a moratorium on the building and development of storage facilities, also known as many storage, self-storage. Uh, this was not uncommon to the cities around us. Um, cities from Coon Rapids to Maple Grove were all putting moratoriums both at the same time and continue to because of the amount of development of these types of facilities. The reason for St. Francis to do this was when we were directly approached by three different organizations trying to find parcels in three different zoning districts. And code did not adequately address where these should be placed or how they should be, um, facilitated moving forward. So with that, uh, the city took the time to review the zoning districts within our code. We also looked at other cities that have facilities to determine best practices for development. We looked at cities that included a mix of both suburban and rural and placed a heavy importance on the overall site and building of the community goals. Tonight, I'm presenting three updates to the city code to provide direction for these types of facilities. One is to place them in the, uh, chap, chapter 10, section 71 for the light industrial zoning districts, to place them as an additional use permit and then make additional requirements within our business licensing, chapter six, and creating a new section 14 to really identify the setbacks in the building designs that we would expect if one of these facilities was to come into our city. Um, updates to chapter 10 zoning are required to have a public hearing, which was held by the planning commission on July 17th. There were no public comments received. Comments by the planning commissioners addressed the limited space provided and a comment on the lack of water and sewer that these types of facilities do break forward. Planning commissioners also provided the opportunity to comment on chapter six and they didn't request any changes to the design and requirements of the development of the facilities. Planning commissioners did approve it to go forward in council as is. If council is in agreement with these changes and determines tonight as a first reading, the new code will be effective September 22nd. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so Kay, are you changing, you, with chapter six now will become chapter 14?
No, mayor council, so chapter six is our overall chapter that, uh, works with our business licensing. So that's what we just put our non-rocker updates, um, tobacco, taxis. So this would be adding a new section to chapter six. Uh, adding section 14 would be dedicated specifically to these types of facilities.
Okay, okay, that's okay. Well, I happen to read, you know, I, I like this idea, by the way, because, um, one of the things you mentioned here, a couple of things you mentioned here, how they're not really, uh, uh, manned fully. Um, and really, it's, there's no really security other than cameras, I would imagine. But they're not, they don't have somebody on site fully. Um, um, and I don't really think they really should be. They don't really fit with our St. Francis four plan and our retail of, of, uh, our retail districts of Bridge Street or whatever. I think light industrial, like, like, uh, rail one is probably a better designation for it. Todd, do you have any, uh, anything, anything to, uh, add to that as far as what you feel with, uh, storage places like this in areas?
I know the modern ones that, you know, are, well, I, as far as zoning and stuff, no, not really, but as far as security, um, I mean, they're top of, uh, you know, fences are, are great for a lot of the modern ones. We have a lot of fencing and, and cameras are, are big. Um, the storage stables that we have in Congress are a little empty now in terms of security goes. Um, but, but I, you know, a lot of the modern ones are top of the, in, in more of the natural area. Um, at least from what I've heard, I have a whole lot of problems or issues.
And that would be part of, Kay, would that be part of our conditional use permit for fencing, of course, and security cameras and stuff like that?
Correct, Mayor and council, those kind of, um, design requirements are in our section fourteen where we're asking them to, you know, give some different depth, um, you know, the outside storage is prohibited, to look at landscaping, so that is to, to really discuss, you know, placement of electrical service, fire hydrants, exterior lighting, and it is, you know, built to, to address both the security, both the aesthetic appearance and, and try to balance that.
All right, but I see two circle parts you have here. Section dash fourteen dash two definitions, open storage, open space storage is space allowed for the temporary storage of boats, trailers, and vehicles and shall be part of the storage facility. Open storage as a standalone use will not qualify as a storage facility. And then this other item B under six dash fourteen dash four states, open space storage is prohibited.
Correct, Mayor and council, so my apologies if these were, were circled, that was from our planning commission thing. Uh, basically, the first one is clearly the definition of what it means. The second one, uh, six fourteen four B is basically saying we will not allow an outdoor storage within this facility.
Okay, so where would A come into play?
A is just the definition.
Just the definition, okay.
Correct.
Okay, um, like I say, to me, uh, because we have had inquiries about putting it on Bridge Street, which I have, does not fit with our St. Francis board plan at all, uh, to me it's more of an industrial L one zoning, makes more sense to me because they're not manned, um, they don't, you know, the traffic can come and go, uh, but there are issues that could happen with those types of facilities, I would imagine, Todd, right? Oh, okay, all right. So, I'm going to open up for discussion here. Kevin, you have anything to say on this?
I really don't. A few questions I had, Kay, you answered promptly and, uh, made a lot of sense, so that's all I have.
Good, good. Joe?
No questions, I think you agreed, uh, agreed on it and keep it out of the retail district and all that kind of stuff to, to push our plan forward.
Okay, Rob?
I just have, um, a little bit of understanding of the two circle ones, um, kind of brought some attention to me, um, and it was the open, open space, um, to allow temporary storage of boats or whatever. My understanding would be if you put a building and then you put a large fence around it, can you have outside storage in that aspect? And then if you just made a fence and said, hey, bring your boats in here, that in sixteen, six fourteen four B is not allowed. So, I'm just trying to get some clarification on, if they put a storage building with, with dry units and they have a large fence, they could put outside storage in with that style? Am I understanding that right or no?
No, Mayor and council, so six fourteen two is literally just defining what outside storage is, so any outdoor parking, um, long rows of cameras or boats, I know there's a very large facility down in Coon Rapids that is surrounded by exterior parking. So that is clearly a definition. With six fourteen four B, we're basically saying that any outdoor storage is prohibited. So if, the, the way this code is written, we would not allow any of the buildings to have that stack of cars or RVs.
Okay, so let me ask you this, uh, with what we're obviously, I think, what you're just, a garage.
Correct.
Put a fence around that outside of that first stall garage or whatever and put a boat in there. Is that good?
In an individual residential property, if it's on a approved parking service, it may...
A whole other blocking.
That's a whole different...
So, and, so...
...storage facility.
Okay, well, store while there's storing something here.
Right, but, but this is...
So this would be limited, within their CUP, they would be told that they cannot have any open space storage, so they will not be granted, based on the way this code is written, they would not be granted for rows of parking with...
Right, you're talking, you're talking more about commercial.
Correct, this is nothing to do with any residential, this is specifically...
And that's really what I want to clarify, I don't want to be a residential.
Yeah, no, it's...
Because we have a viewing audience that have a question, so let's make this clear, this pertains to commercial.
Correct. Solely to commercial of this type of facility.
Unless you want to get to the end.
No, thank you.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you. So, and, and, you know, okay, all right. All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, good, good job on that, because I think, uh, it needed to be done, it really has some pretty issues, um, and, and we're not saying that we're, we're turned off to facilities like this, we just want to be in control of where they go. I think that's our work. Okay, so, all right, now, uh, this is going to be a roll call, Jenny, uh, but I have to have a motion tonight, uh, for, to adopt, okay? Do I have to read this whole thing again?
Uh, just to adopt, okay.
Okay, uh, and add, and add, will, could the first reading, to everything, the center meeting and all this?
There'll be a, a second reading coming, uh, in two weeks.
Right, but, so the whole thing there, ordinance two fifty-one, all the way down to all that I stated before, that's what we're going to adopt tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Ask it.
Ask it, okay. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Newbar makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Bar makes a second, any for the discussion? Then we will take a roll call.
Councilmember Adick?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Newbar?
Aye.
Melvin?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That would pass. Thank you, Kay, I like, like I say, again, I like to, uh, anytime I can make a great area definitive, that's a good thing. All right, now, uh, everybody take out their phones for this, uh, work session that we have to be been, uh, requested to do, um, and it's going to be one of two dates, twelfth or the fourteenth, but Rod just notified me before the meeting, we cannot attend either date, so, um, but Joe knows his input on the, on the subject, I take, right?
Okay, I'm preparing, uh, we have quite a bit of, uh, information coming back, stacks of information that we're collecting.
Right, I'm sure that, okay, uh, uh, but we have to do a meeting, so are you, do you have a problem with us doing this meeting?
No.
Okay, we go ahead with it?
Yeah, my, my, my point of view is not going to change.
I know.
After this meeting.
What did you hear? All right, as I said, okay, so we will, we will know your take on it.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, okay? All right, um, so, to the ones that will be here, uh, the twelfth or the fourteenth, which is the better dates?
Mr. Mayor, I don't prefer it not be the twelfth because that would mean I may have to miss a second schoolwork meeting right in October.
Oh, you can't do that.
So I haven't been able to be the last to meet the work session.
So, does the fourteenth, the Wednesday, work for everybody?
Should.
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Joe? Okay, so can we do it, um, I'm going to put this right here right now, I'm going to put in, um, uh, work session, work session, I'm going to go, um, about five thirty, is that okay?
Sure.
Everybody? Five thirty, okay, and that would be, um, at the city hall, correct? Right? I might say the fourteenth at five thirty, at city hall, one week from this Wednesday. Okay, everybody agree?
Yeah.
All right, then I'll go save and I'll stand there. Okay, thank you. Okay? All right, yeah, thank you very much. Uh, second meeting over the public, anyone? Kenny? Nobody?
No.
Okay, uh, moving on to reports, uh, departmental reports, uh, Fire Department Committee, Dave, you're up.
Mayor and council, uh, before you tonight is our Fire Department Second Quarter Report. Uh, you'll find and close that, uh, we're finally able to compile some, uh, relevant data, as you know, with Councilmember Newbar as well, there's been some difficulties at the county level with some of our reporting software, uh, we finally feel like we have gotten some of those things worked out and can report some reliable data for you. Uh, over the course of the second quarter, we did respond to a hundred and sixty calls per service, this is a twenty-three call increase in comparison to two thousand eighteen. Now, that's just for the second quarter, as you've seen in my off week numbers, we're experiencing, uh, the last time around the numbers, about thirty-four percent increase in call volume from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, so we do continue to get...
Thirty-four percent?
Thirty-four percent. Uh, with some of the documents I shared with City Administrator Coleman, last week, we have already exceeded our two thousand sixteen call volume this year. So, our growth has been pretty exponential in our volumes. Thankfully, our dollar loss is down pretty significantly in comparison to two thousand eighteen in the same reporting period, uh, but that was due to a very significant structure fire on two hundred forty, thirty-four. Uh, unfortunately, our dollar loss this year was due to a very tragic vehicle fire car accident that resulted in a double fatality on Easter Sunday. Uh, the other good news is we also continue to see a reduction in our response time from ten minutes and twenty-two seconds in two thousand eighteen to ten minutes and one second in two thousand and nineteen. We did respond to one structure fire during this reporting period, thankfully it was a chimney fire that was contained to the fluid, there was no damage to the actual structure, and the extinguishment was quick. Uh, we also continue to use our advanced protocols, uh, on EMSI, uh, by injury medications that otherwise would be further delayed, uh, until an ambulance would arrive on scene, and you can see those listed below. Uh, of note, we also do see an increase, uh, in the amount of times that we are sending firefighters with a line up in transporting patients to the hospital. Uh, this is in direct relation that we have had higher community events and, um, because of our quality and training, uh, they are more comfortable and confident in their skills and ability. Uh, on the second page, you'll see a list of significant events that aren't, that weren't otherwise noted on the first page. Page three is just our breakdown of kind of a gross, uh, category of our calls and what types of calls they have in that. On page four, that's our incident subtype, where we break down our EMS calls versus fire incidents in the fire, on the fireside, there is basically one subtype and that's a fire incident, which is why you don't see a further breakdown on that page. Following that page, there is a response time over that reporting period, as you can see, it was ten minutes and one second. This report also excludes any time we are slow to a routine response or we are canceled. This is only a version response, it's at least part of the report. Uh, following that, uh, you'll see that our average, uh, attendance for fire calls is seven point seven firefighters, this is relatively stable compared to the same reporting period last year, which was seven point eight, uh, although do keep in mind, we do have two firefighters that are on medical leave at this time as well. Uh, the next page shows our calls breakdown, uh, by days in the week, uh, unsurprisingly, Fridays are our busiest day, uh, for whatever reason, Mondays and Fridays obviously seem to be the busiest days of the week for emergencies, uh, it might have some correlation with the beginning of the week or the end of the week, but who knows? And then you can see the breakdown of, uh, events by hours, and then la, on the last page, that's our total, uh, events requested by dispatch over that quarter, so the difference between the one sixteen and the one twenty is if dispatch is notifying us that they have a vendor that needs to get to the station, that it's not an actual emergent event. So we've had four requests of somebody needs to be in the building, they have a request for information, but it's not categorized as an emergency event, so that's why you will see the disparity between the one sixteen and the one twenty. The one sixteen are actual emergency events, the one twenty would be the total requests. I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
No, I, I, I like it myself as far as the breakdown, looks pretty good here, I'm amazed that, uh, between what, uh, two and three is, is, is the twelve and a breakdown there, two P M. to three P M.? And then, uh, nine, nine A M. to ten A M.?
Our daytime hours do tend to be the busiest hour of the day, and that's not something that's unique to St. Francis, generally speaking, most people are out and about, they're caught, they're moving, they're aware, they notice things, and that's when you might need your calls.
Okay, uh, I'm going to turn this over to Joe, anything to say?
I don't have any questions, uh, I'd like to report in detail, and I'd like to get to Joe.
Thank you. Kevin?
I have a couple of questions, uh, under the medicine, uh, issued, a glucometer, or one of the called glucometer, eighteen of them, so that's a, probably a diabetic situation?
Yeah, so when we use a gluconer, the way that most EMS EMTs, firefighters are taught now is that a blood glucose is now becoming the fifth vital sign, if you will, so blood pressure, saturation, oxygen saturation, pulse respirations, gluconer, the blood glucose level has kind of become the fifth vital sign. It's not necessarily indicative to include that as a diabetic, but we also use it to exclude that as a potential cause of the crisis. So sometimes it's kind of the shotgun approach, if you will, we don't have the ability or the tools to diagnose many things in the field, but we do have clues, and sometimes we can use that to get, get closer, or we have to exclude potential causes out of circumstance, if that makes sense.
Have you had any repeat visits with this glucometer to the same individual meeting assistance?
We do have some customers, if you will, that, that call on a more regular basis, um, whether or not it's specifically related to their diabetic state, it's hard to decipher at this point.
Well, they use the glucometer at the, at the same customer per day?
At the same time, multiple times on one phone.
Right. Or multiple times in a, in a month's time?
Absolutely, yeah, we use it on a pretty regular basis.
So John Doe could, you could be responding to John Doe's phone three times in a month using your glucometer. Are you allowed to do any education, uh, on that, again, these people with some of the ailments know things already about themselves, but are, are you allowed to give further education or?
Every opportunity that we meet with somebody that's an opportunity to educate, um, so we do try to take that opportunity as much as we can. Keep in mind, there's not, normally a couple of different factors that we see, somebody that is potentially impacted by diseases like diabetes, one is that they are potentially a brittle diabetic, which means their medication is very hard to regulate, their sugar is very hard to titrate over a period of time, regardless of whether or not they're compliant, which leads me to the second issue, there are non-compliant people out there with all kinds of disease pathologies, right, whether COPD or diabetes, even congestive heart failure, right? One of the things that we see, and again, it's not a unique problem in St. Francis, you have to be compliant with your doctor's orders, even when you try your best, right? Things do tend to not always work out well, but we do see that we have some non-compliant folks that we see on a fairly regular basis.
All right, and then medically, uh, work-related or personal major medically, I mean, we haven't had any work injuries, have we?
Not employment-related to St. Francis.
Okay, and, and, okay, and then, uh, your shifts, do you have a cover, coverage on the, sufficiently in the various shifts, even when you're down two personnel all this time?
The nature of our business, and, and Councilmember Bar, and certainly explaining this as well, the nature of our business is we have a group of twenty-four transient employees, so we all care of each other, some of us are in town on certain days and not in town on other days, we're working our full-time jobs, we're going to the cabin, we're on fishing trip, whatever the case may be. So what we try and do is get an aggregate number of people on any given call at any given time. Some days our numbers are up, as far as people are able to respond and willing to respond, some days our numbers are down. The fact that we do have two members on, on medical leave does hurt, right? Um, hopefully they're relatively short, um, but one's going on close to six months now, and we just thought about the other will be out till at least September twenty-eighth, so it does impact us, um, we're no different than the police department, public works department, we have employees who go down, it impacts our ultimate efficiency, um, but the fact that we're seeing our numbers relatively stable, like you said, from two thousand eighteen in the same reporting period, we're at seven point eight attendees per call on average, we're at seven point seven right now. So we're able to maintain, like anything else, in due time, we'll have to monitor that, trying to make sure that we stay ahead of that, so.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Kevin touched on a couple of my questions, so I think you've heard your points.
Right, Rod?
Um, calling report, I really appreciate it, um, just looking at call volumes, I just wanted to kind of break this down for the city council. That's a hundred sixteen calls over a quarter, so that's three months, um, that's thirty-eight calls per month, that's a call a day, so based on those types of numbers, I wouldn't see the city of St. Francis needing a full-time employee, so I have...
And I would agree with you if the only responsibility was response, as a very small portion of the job, uh, more than, Mr. Teiger doesn't go on every service call for public works, nor does Chief Swire go on every police call, right, it's a very small component of what we do as a organization.
Right, that's back more like, uh, what, uh, three, five some calls per month, something like that on a two-month basis?
Thirty.
Thirty-eight, is it? Okay, thirty-eight. Thirty-eight, all right. But I would agree, it's more to a, to a staff.
Sure.
And that's for discussion coming up, we already have your take on us, so we know exactly where you're at. Okay, anyway, um, I like the report, um, and, um, I like the new chief vehicle with the new logo, I like to be able to define that between police and fire, I think that's important, but because before, you really had to stop and look to see who you were, uh, maybe the police don't want to be linked to that, but the fire should be like that, so that's good. Um, I like the new training room, I think that was very good, I think that's going to be a real big help to you. Um, and Paul, what about that leak you had mentioned to me, uh, don't...
That's amazing.
That's amazing, sorry, but what about the leak on the roof? Did you, did you finally install that yet or not?
I believe it was, uh, a matter of installing a drain pipe on one of the HVAC units, there's a drip leg, um, that needed to be plung, uh, back to the wall and down to a drain from one of the Corray vac units in the apparatus base.
And it was never done before?
It was not done before.
Okay, so now it is, and that solved that problem then?
We're, we're hoping, yeah.
Okay, all right, well, the reason that I bring this up, the reason that I bring this up to Councilmouth is there are going to be a work session coming up that I'm going to call for us to start discussing our buildings, okay? Um, we have been smart here over the last couple, two and a half years of maintaining our buildings, uh, but then it's going to come down to a situation where, for instance, with our, our fire station, that is actually a hodgepodge of buildings as far back as in the sixties, um, if I'm correct, there are fifty, one segment is fifty plus years old, so it really comes down to we're going to maintain them, um, but we have to draw points of, of how much it would cost us to maintain these, or look at other ways of, of, of new facilities or whatever, and again, for the viewing public, this won't be done tomorrow, it's going to take planning, uh, financial aid through the USDA, cultural board that we're looking into, low-interest homes, whatever, but you're probably talking three, maybe five years down the road before it happens, but it's time, we need to discuss it ahead of time, we can't wait till the roofs fall in or these big things happen, you know, we have to rush to get things done. You know, as I stated at one meeting, at a fire council meeting, um, you don't want to buy a snow blower unless you have to in winter, you just want to wait till summertime to buy them, so we want to start planning according with these buildings, we have our budgets in place to our capital improvement plan, but at the same time, we want to be prepared, uh, how much more do we need to put in these buildings, they don't get younger, they get older, and we need to be smart with our money and how we're doing it, I think we are doing that, so I will be calling for a work session, just to let you know, after this one budgetary work session gets done, so we can start discussing what we're going to do and how we're going to do it, and be smart. So once again, for the viewing public, this is not going to be anything here to see shovels in the ground or anything like that, it's going to be just a discussion to start the, start, uh, talking about what to do in the future and how to plan properly. Um, but thank you, Dave, uh, good report.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, uh, moving on, uh, to council member reports, and I will start with Sarah on this.
Um, not a whole lot that I have done over the last little bit, but I do want to remind everybody from night to night tomorrow night at the community park, come up, um, talk to your neighbors, talk to your council members and your neighbor, and let us know what you're thinking. You don't know what you're thinking unless you talk to us, so please come up and talk with us. It's a very funny event, every year it's been fun.
Was it good last year? Um, Rob?
I don't have much either, um, I'll be out at night, you, night to night tomorrow, Sarah stole my thunder, um, so look forward to seeing a lot of the public out there and getting to know everyone.
Yeah, okay, Joe?
I look forward to night to night, and I will be the guy walking around pretending I don't know any of these people.
That's a good one. All right, Kevin?
Um, I just want to thank everybody in advance in the city that's put heart and soul and effort into tomorrow's festivities at, in the city, uh, especially the both chiefs that are going to try next, you know, the outreach is very important, police, fire, it's, um, um, it's very important that the citizens know that we're out there doing our job, that you guys are out there and natural people, just like they're people, so I appreciate that, I won't be in attendance with, because I don't know any of these guys, I'm going to be in my own neighborhood with forty other households, hopefully they're doing some hot dogs and burgers and, and hopefully some of our, uh, police or fire can stop by and say hello to, but, and you have any plans for this already, uh, maybe just go talk to a neighbor tomorrow night, or, or nobody's doing anything, and go next door and just say hi, how are you, I mean, this is really a chance to get to say hi and know your neighbors as well, and again, um, looking out for one another is a big deal, uh, like the police, uh, chief said before, you know, garage sale time is open, people in there aren't garage sale signs, your garage doors are open, your police are looking out for you in the middle of the night, they're telling you your ride's very open, uh, tell your neighbors that they, you know, some, uh, ways that they can help, you can help each other, just be safer as when the kids are out on bikes and walking, or you see a, a lone kid out there walking, or, um, the trouble clerk anywhere, and, uh, it doesn't have to be that way, we don't have to be afraid, but if we work together, it goes a lot nicer, so, that's all there.
Okay, um, yeah, I would remind everybody once again also, night to night, do we have a helicopter coming? I, I think I heard something that, I think we do.
I hope so.
Okay, great, and do we get a tug of war, I was hoping for, or, we don't know yet? Okay, but anyway, we got a lot of other things, there was great master, it's at the There was break master, it's at the community park from five P.M. to eight P.M. tomorrow, on Tuesday. What's nice about a small community is the fact that we should all get to be out there and talk to our neighbors and meet up and stuff like that, and that's what this is really about. So it's a great time. I think the weather's gonna cooperate with us, I'm hoping I don't know what, so I'm looking forward to that. I also want to remind everybody that one week from this Thursday, I believe QuickTrip is, is the fifteenth, which is a week from this Thursday, at six A.M. or five A.M.? Five A.M.? This is huge, so. I understand you, this is a big thing in the police, you know, watching all sorts of stuff. Are, are the, is the signage on our, our city hall for parking, you putting place yet, or that is it?
Not yet.
Will that be done before?
Yes.
Let me put you on the spot.
Will it be a helicopter?
No, but I just want to say, so, so everybody knows, once again, August fifteenth, Thursday, five A.M., QuickTrip opens up to the public. We've done a racket shot, it's like bees working together, ants, I've never seen like it in my life, that's fantastic. Want to remind again, everybody out there, you have Labor Day coming, you know, coming up, it lasts all day of the season, so enjoy the weather and all that, but be safe out there when you go out, enjoy your water sports and whatever. And as we mentioned before, through this dog thing that came up tonight and other things, you know, you need to make us aware of your issue or concern before we can, we can address it. We don't know what is on your mind unless you let us know what's on your mind. We will look into it to the best ability that we can, as we stated many times before, but you have to bring the issue to us. Like I say, what frustrates me more, and I'm sure Council too, is that when somebody says, well, I brought it up to somebody, but they didn't do anything about it. Well, who'd you bring it up to? I don't know. I mean, I hear this all the time, and I just want to be brought to. You can email us, you can call us, talk to staff, it's all there, we're here for you. It really, what it comes down to, as I've said before, help us to serve you better. And that really is the key to it. Help us, once again, to serve you better. Crack, while you're there, I would ask you, where are we with Riverbank?
We started construction. They're great in Riverbank land right now. They did leave the site for three days, coming back tomorrow. They had an emergency on, but they're moving on.
So what, we are intentionally looking, according to, of course, weather and factor and everything, we're technically looking out, what month will this be complete?
Probably September.
September?
Yeah.
Any feedback, any people calling in about or anything like that, from anybody? So far, so good.
There he goes.
And Paul said, yeah, just someone's issue about someone being kind of involved with what's going on. Okay, on that, I would say, I would say good on that one, looking forward to this work session and the one coming after that for the buildings, like I say, which is just starting the process of long-term discussion, which is what it takes, it takes us, it takes us time to put everything, all the facts together to present to the public, and what we're doing, and you know what we're doing, before we can let you know what we're gonna, what's gonna, how it's gonna end up. So on that, once again, you have a Labor Day holiday coming up, and the offices will be closed on September second. One thing I also want to remember, or remind everybody, and you'll be notified of this, there is a, I want to get this out just to make sure everybody knows this, and there'll be notification coming out there, but on my calendar I have, this is going to be a MIND dot meeting, and this meeting is now on record, so, because Kate wants me to push this to, MIND dot meeting on the nineteenth of September, Thursday, at the church on St. Francis Boulevard, two two nine four zero, four thirty P.M. to seven thirty P.M.